Okay, good morning. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners for May 4th, 2020. Our first order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation. And after, I mean, after our Pledge of Allegiance, I'll have Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward for the invocation. And I just would request that everyone please remember Raleigh House family during this time of year, and to keep them in your thoughts and prayers during this time. And so, if you would, please rise for the pledge.
May we pray. Our most gracious God, our Father in Heaven, we give you praise and we thank you. As we meet together here to endeavor in this exercise of democracy, we're grateful, O God, for government that is of the people, by the people, and for the people. And we pray that by your mighty grace, that that government shall not perish from the earth. We ask you to bless this meeting of our county commissioners, that as we pray each time, that these our servants may have wisdom and discernment from you to make good and right decisions. But Lord, as decisions are rendered here, we pray for the people of our county. We pray for deliverance from COVID-19 and all of its effects, that we can be restored to the place where we can sit together and shake hands and hug one another. Lord, please deliver us, we pray, in our world from this pestilence. And we ask you to please comfort and be with those who are struggling this time of year. We pray for the Howell family, as we're grateful for the hero that saved lives. We remember those who have lost loved ones because of violence, and we pray for your provision for them. But Lord, as we're grateful for this county, from the lofty heights of Pisgah to the top of Mount Lynn Lowry, grant that we always may look to that place and remember where a cross was erected because of a daddy's love for his little girl, that we may be reminded of your love for us, and that these who serve you here may act in love for those they represent. For these things, I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Reverend Womack. Okay, our next order of business is called for public hearing, and we have a request for a public hearing on May the 18th, 2020, at 5:30 in the historic courtroom of the historic courthouse, located at 215 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, for the Haywood Recovery Fund, which is a small business loan program. We have our program administrator, David Francis, here this morning to describe that. Welcome, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody is well. Sure was a beautiful weekend in Haywood County. Want to request a public hearing. Due to the loan program that we initiated, it is an economic development initiative. And part of that is that we still have to meet the general statute requirements of having a public hearing when we do economic development. As we, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we did a great job of partnering with Haywood Advancement, with the Haywood County Chamber. And so, this has enabled, so far, 27 businesses to apply for the loans. Professional businesses, a couple of restaurants, and a lot of small businesses, a couple of retail shops, have all applied, and we've up to about $300,000 in funding by the end of this week. So, it's been a great program. And, you know, thank goodness that we did it, because right when we started this, you know, last month, we thought there was going to be a lot of funding come through the triple pre-program and the other programs. Then, you know, the money ran out quick. So, we were slow when it first started out, because folks thought that, you know, that that money was going to be available there. But in the last two to three weeks, our applications have really gone through the roof. So, you know, thank you.
They're saying they can't hear you in the back.
Somebody have to turn it up in the back.
That's just the way it is in here, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Is that, is that better? Hey, Ron, do you mind turning it up, please? I can turn it up. Is that better? Okay, good. All right. Thank you, thank you. And so, with, with the program, you know, this program that we started here has helped tremendously with our businesses in Haywood County. So, respectfully request for the public hearing on Monday, May 18th, at 5:30. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Okay, so, we, we need to have a motion to have that public hearing. That's something we've not been doing, but I think that we've discovered we needed to do that. So, if someone would make a motion that we approve the request for a public hearing.
Tom.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? You type of saying aye.
Aye.
If you want to pose. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, David. Okay, our next order of business is our public comment session, and I have a few people signed up. And I would request that you keep your comments three minutes. I'll keep the time, and when you hear my phone go off, it'll be making a little noise. Finish up your comments at that time. And our first speaker will be, I'm going to ask Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward.
I appreciate you allowing me this privilege. Commissioners, I just wanted to thank you that you've allowed me over these last two and a half years to serve as your chaplain. When I was 13 years old, it was the first time I ever sat in this room, and it was as a witness in a larceny case, right up there. And I remember Judge Leatherwood looking at me very sternly and saying, "Young man, spit out your chewing gum." I never envisioned that I would be back in the room carrying out the responsibilities that I have. I actually aspired to be the sheriff, but I'm grateful that there are better men who have assumed that office than me through the years. But I simply wanted to thank you for the privilege of praying for you, and as my wife and I remove ourselves to the southern west coast of Florida, I want you to know that these mountains will never be far from my heart. Ten generations of my family have lived here, and I will continue to pray for you and give thanks for you and for whoever sits in these chairs. And I will pray for the good people of Haywood County. I simply want to express my gratitude to you, and may God bless you.
Thank you, Reverend Womack. We appreciate all that you've done.
I'd just like to say I appreciate Patrick Womack. His prayers seem to be very appropriate and on point for the business that we were faced with and every meeting that I've been in. And I really appreciate him as a man, as a person, as a, his work in the community. So, thank you.
We appreciate your time, Reverend Womack. Good luck to you. Today's is last, will be the last time he'll be able to, to give our invocation. So, we really appreciate it. Okay, so, we'll move on to, our next speaker will be Robert Williams. If you would, just announce your name and maybe where you live, if you would. I mean, Robert Edwards. I don't know what I said. Sorry.
Good morning. I'm Robert Edwards. I reside at 3289 Soco Road in Maggie Valley. I stand before you today as a Haywood County resident, as a father of school-aged children, a husband and a son of two elderly county residents. I too am a business owner, who in the course of business, not only employs other county residents, but I earn my living to feed my family, to save for my children's education and my retirement, in addition to making sure to spend my discretionary income with fellow Haywood County residents with their businesses. Today, I also stand here speaking on behalf of an immeasurable group of people in this county, who like me feel that the shutdown on our local economy must end today.
Yes.
As I have canvassed my community, I have been met with an overwhelming level of support from both small businesses and residents alike, who feel that the time is long overdue for the restrictions on our local economy to be lifted. Most agree that upon the immediate discovery of this virus and the scary data that was being portrayed, it was appropriate to restrict the movement of people and the crowds. The problem is in the data, and who, and how it is being presented. I will not blubiate on my last point for the sake of my three minutes. The time has passed to have our county commissioners stand up for the values of our mountain heritage and demand from the governor the lawful right to allow us to self-manage our county's business. We no longer need to follow the lead of the governor's broad statewide approach concerning the virus. As a county, we can test, treat, trace, but more importantly, move about our community safely and respectfully. We cannot risk losing the backbone of our community, the mom-and-pop businesses that feed so many in our county. Stand up to opening Haywood now. Open our retail shops, open our restaurants, and open our tourism industry. We do not need to drag out the opening of Haywood until the likes of Mecklenburg and Wake Counties are ready. Not everyone in Haywood County is getting paid due to the working, due to working for the government, the hospital, Lowe's, Walmart, or Ingalls. You have an entire town in your jurisdiction that relies on the movement of people to make a living. Maggie Valley will absolutely be wiped out if you do not act now. The businesses of Maggie Valley and downtown Waynesville, along with so many others in Haywood County, need these travelers coming to fill their stores, to eat in their restaurants, and stay in their hotels and vacation rental homes. Any inaction or inappropriate action will undoubtedly seal the fate of so many of your constituents. Today, I ask you to declare the importance of tourism on our county's economy by demanding from Governor Cooper to release the restriction of leisure travel for Haywood County. The time is now, gentlemen, to make the right decision to facilitate the rehanging of open signs throughout our county, and in doing so, you will be supporting our mountain way of life. Thank you each for your time, your service, and God be with you.
Next speaker will be Dallas Disney.
Good morning. My name is Dallas Disney. I'm a resident at 1912 Eagles Nest Road here in Waynesville. I'm here to discuss the opening of the county, please, to lift this, lift the restrictions on the COVID virus. Constitution of the United States, Bill of Rights, Amendment Number One, Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. I'm here to suggest that the governor's action in closing the state, along with many others, is an executive fiat action and is not in compliance with the Constitution of the United States. The cure, I only have three minutes here, the cure seems to be worse than the virus. Shut down the, the areas of the United States has crippled the economy. And here in western North Carolina, you're not New York, you're not New York City, you're not New Jersey, you're not Charlotte, you're not other places that do have a big problem. Last I heard, you had, it was either 10 or 15, I don't know what the numbers are, but it's a pretty small percentage of a, of a problem here, here in the county. The economy needs to get back, and the people need to get to work. And you're going to ruin the place. I mean, the, as I said already, the cure seems to be worse than the virus. People have bills to pay and mortgages, and I just urge you to lift the restrictions and lift them now, anything related to this Chinese virus. Thanks very much for your time. I appreciate what you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Disney. Okay, our next speaker will be Jamie Mary.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Good morning. I'm not as elegant as these gentlemen, but...
Pull the microphone.
Oh, I'm short, too.
Yeah, just pull that.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, like I said, I'm not as elegant as these gentlemen, but I do have a thing, things to say, and I have some questions to ask you two, if you don't mind. First of all, do you, gentlemen, want this county to reopen like it used to be and be vibrant? Yes or no?
We generally just allow you the three minutes to go ahead and talk.
Oh, really? I can't ask your questions?
If we get into dialogue, it's difficult.
Well, just ask yes or no. Raise your hand.
If you could just give your, whatever you're going to say, that'd be great.
Okay, first of all, I just assume that you want us to be vibrant and be successful as a county like we used to be. All right. So, thank you very much for your silence. Anyway, I agree with these gentlemen. The experts say that we need to shut down. However, there's other experts that say that this quarantine is doing worse than the quarantine as we are. First of all, vitamin D, which comes to the sun, kills germs. How in the world can we be healthy if we're stayed inside with the germs, number one. Number two, our hospitals are in, especially our hospital, they are in problems, because my friends at our nurses, they're on furloughs, because they do not have, they won't let anybody in unless they say, "I've got the virus." Now, these hospitals get $18,000 if they say that they are virus-related, and they get $32,000 if the doctors say they die of the COVID-19. It's a scam. That is a scam. All right? So, I'm sure you probably know that. However, in the beginning, I do agree that we had to be cautious, because we didn't know what it was. But now we know, it's only 000008% of the people in our county that have this Chinese virus. All right? It's a virus, the elderly and the people that have pre-existing conditions are vulnerable. Take care of them, of course, but don't bring this county down. We need to open our businesses. We need to open our churches. However, I'm here for my Lord. Thank God, we have a beautiful chaplain that had a beautiful prayer. We have the Ten Commandments. You cannot quarantine God. First of all, I would like to, well, I can't ask your questions. Anyway, you guys do, you do have the authority to open up these churches, because we do go to drive-in churches, which is, that's it? I got it? That's it?
Yeah, you can finish up your last thought.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I've got so much to talk, and I'm sure my colleagues and my friends will finish this up. Anyway, I want you to open up these, the county, call the governor. McDougal County opened up. Did anybody call them? I did. They opened up. Everything's fine, and they have more deaths than we do. And they were all elderly. All right? Take care of the elderly, of course, and the sick. But don't bring down our, our county. Call the governor. All right?
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, he's getting money, I believe, no, I shouldn't say that. I believe that the state is getting money from the federal if they can, if they don't open up. You know, they're kind of taking their time, open up. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. You all look really wonderful, and thank you for your service. I talked to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's another thing. I did ask questions, and Mr. Bress responded to me on email. So, I thank you. All right.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker will be Janet Presson.
Good morning. I'm Janet Presson. I live at 49 Lodge Pole Pine Lane in Waynesville. I'm here basically on behalf of vacation rental owners. We have got to reopen. We have personally lost thousands. We've got three properties in Haywood County, and we will not break the law and allow guests in without the county being opened back up and the governor allowing. But we have got to get this back open. It's hurting us and all the other tourist-related businesses financially and otherwise. I will, I'm also here to represent a population of intellectually disabled and disabled individuals in Haywood and North Carolina, and actually nationally, because nobody's talking about this population. I'm the mother of a 28-year-old with intellectual disabilities. He gets services, he's, he's home and isolated, and that's not good for him. Special Olympics has been locked down. This popular, you know, I, I sent a letter to you guys, an email, a couple of weeks ago, and I got a comment back from one of you. "Your son's inability to participate in the Special Olympics or go shopping whenever the urge hits you is a minor price to pay if it saves his life or the lives of others." That's somebody that does not understand this population and how important it is to socialize. Our kids don't get invited to birthday parties. They can't go stay with grandparents many times because of behaviors or elopement issues, or medical issues, or whatever. Some of these folks have got severe seizures, behaviors, other issues. Special Olympics and other activities, day programs, getting them out in the community is so, so important. I mean, it is critical to get them out in the fresh air and sunlight and going places. We've set up little routines of going shopping to get personal items, and this and that, and the other. Some, some of it, I hate to say, is busy work, but it is, but it is their lives, and we've taken that, and that is wrong. It is dangerous for this population. It is just, just, I can't tell you how bad it is until you live with it. And again, we set them up healthy, happy, fun lives, and then right now, they're, they're isolated and shut down more than anybody else. They can't get on the internet. They can't make cell phone calls to their friends if they're nonverbal, you know? So, we've got to think about this population. Couple of thoughts. It's not the government's job to protect my health. It's my job to do so. It's your job to protect your health. It's the government's job to protect our rights, and we need to see that done. The other thing, the other comment I want to leave you with, vaccines. We're all waiting on this COVID-19 vaccine? Well, no, we're not. My son was brain injured at 15 months. He went from healthy, happy, normal, neurotypical, and I've got his medical records to prove that. He was brain injured by his vaccine. Now, clearly, that doesn't happen to everyone, but it does happen to a certain percentage, and do not forget about them. I will promise you, I will not take a vaccine. My son will not take this vaccine. What they're doing right now with the testing of this new vaccine, this vaccine, they're rushing through, they're not doing any double-blind placebo-controlled studies, which are the gold standard for any medication, which these are considered biologics, so they don't have to be tested in the same manner. They're also not doing any animal studies, which even the, the vaccine proponents say, "Don't skip this process." But they're racing this to the market, and when they do, they can keep it, they can use it on their own families, but there are many of us that will not take it. So, do not try to mandate that when this is available. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Brian Allen. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Brian Allen. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. I'm just going to shoot from the hip, basically, and tell you my experience, what's happened with our family. We're small business owners here in Haywood County. We own two small businesses. I also run a ministry, so basically, three businesses. We own Airbnb, and we've just been extremely hit hard by it, over $30,000 in income has been lost in our small businesses, which is ultimately tax dollars to the county. Where our Airbnb's lost $8,500. Because of that, on Friday, we had to put it on the market for sale, because our family can't keep going on like this. I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old. We have applied for every PPP, the disaster loan. We haven't gotten our stimulus check, anything like that, even though we fall within all the guidelines. We haven't gotten anything or any kind of help to help us keep going as a family. We've done everything right, as far as we've done Dave Ramsey stuff, and paid off debt, and gotten out of debt, and paid down on homes, and done everything that I can think of, that anybody could say, you know, maybe you should have done something different. But to be upstanding members of society, we've done everything I can think of. You know, and our, one of our industries is in the wedding industry, and it's a huge draw to come to these mountains, and a lot of people stay. And I know it hurts tourism, and, and as Rob was saying, it hurts the, rental properties and different stuff like that. But what's happening now is people are canceling a lot of their weddings. You're talking about weddings that are $100,000, $120,000 that are in this county, and that's the kind of income they're bringing. And not only are they canceling it, they're pushing it off to next year. So, we're, we're going to lose a whole year's worth of income. So, the $30,000 we've lost in a month is next to nothing, considering we had to reschedule 33 weddings and lost about 10 that completely just canceled totally and wanted all their money back. And so, I'm looking to the future to see, you know, what's going, about to happen is, this thing has basically just begun, because now all that money that we would be paying in taxes and all this, how's that going to affect the police force and the fire departments and all this kind of stuff for the year to come? Because you start losing that much money and pushing things off like that and not reopening the county. You know, I've said it before, I don't understand, we just want to go and be open. If we have to go to work in hazmat suits and face masks, we want to have the same opportunity that everybody else has. I want to have the same opportunity. If the liquor store is allowed to be open, why can't my business be open? You know, if they have, and, you know, and I know this isn't our county, but, you know, the pot stores are open in Denver, but we can't have our business open. This is ridiculous. So, you know, we're just asking to be given the same treatment as, as some other businesses. And, you know, number one, I don't want anybody to get sick. I, my heart goes out, and I pray for the families that have been affected by this. And so, never would I want to go out here and just spread a virus or anything like that. We want to, y'all to know that we would take every precaution to keep people safe in everything that we do, but we'd also like to reopen so we can provide for our family to eat.
To speak. Was there anyone else that would like to speak this morning? Okay, the lady with the green shirt on. And if you would, just state your name and where you're from. Appreciate it.
First, I want to say thank you. I don't know many of you. I came out here to this area.
What was your, what was your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sharon Rogals, and I live out here by Bethel, Waynesville area.
Okay.
And I left California to come to a state that protects my rights and freedoms, and that's one thing I am very strong about. But I want to thank you for all that you do for our area. There's a couple of questions that I have, which is probably on a lot of people's minds as far as the protests that go. I went to the Raleigh protest, to the Capitol, just to hear what the conversations that people were having. And I'm talking, I'm walking with two nurses who work in the ICU hospitals in Raleigh, and they are there to protest what's going on in the hospitals. And they're saying that there are like 700 surgeries behind schedule for people who need them. It's not a matter of life and death, but they do need these surgeries. They're saying that the entire wing that normally holds flu victims and pneumonia, completely empty. They have like three COVID people that have the COVID virus, and they're laying off doctors. They're laying off nurses. They keep getting tests that very morning, like, "Hey, can you take another day off?" And they're like, "Where's the pandemic, then? If all these people are this sick in our own state, then we're here to protest that the facts are wrong." It's the same thing we're hearing from doctors in California. I mean, if Jerome Adams, who is the Surgeon General, is throwing out the CDC model for the lockdown for the nation, we either trust that our officers in those positions know something, that something's not working, and when governors have the right, or counties have the right to make their own choices and decisions, then it should behoove us to kind of get the information from doctors who are speaking about these things. So, I'm just concerned about the information that we get to make the decisions that we do. And, you know, I have, I have people like in California, like my sister, they're planning on leaving California because of the issues they're facing there, you know? And I'm thinking of our Haywood County area. This is the smallest town I've ever lived in. I've always lived in big cities. And, but when I see, you know, what the effect on small businesses here in this area, and all the millions of dollars of taxes that our county is not going to get, or our state is not going to get, does that mean that, you know, people in your position may not have a job a year from now? You know? Never mind people who have just invested in a salon, or invested in a, whatever their thing might be. So, I just think it's time for us to kind of relook at that. If South Carolina is opening, and they just opened up beaches and businesses, and then you have Gattonburg, Tennessee, just opened restaurants. And at the Raleigh, people are saying, "Well, I know where I'm going shopping. I know where I'm going to go eat." And, and here we are, clamped down in this fear, and we're not getting the right information. And I just think we need to kind of look and see what's really going on. If South Dakota didn't close down, and they're thriving, and there was two other counties in North Carolina that never shut down during lockdown, who are at the rally saying, "Guys, we're doing great." And so, when you start hearing this kind of information, it kind of makes you go, "Well, what's really going on?" You know, I have friends in India, lockdown's going on there. But guess what happens after the lockdown of businesses? The food shortages start coming. Hundreds of people are already dead over there, and I know it's a developing country, but they're also rationing gasoline now. I have friends in Nigeria and different places on the same thing. And when you hear Texas farmers, who their association got in touch with the president, which is why he made the executive order for meat businesses to open up their processing plants because of the food shortage, is the millions of cows and sheep and cattle and everything that's already been killed, we're going to see a shortage, I believe, after summer.
Your time's about up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, if you would, just finish up.
Anyway, I just want to share some of those facts, which as a mother of five children, I am kind of concerned about, you know? I know there's people now who are starting to stock up on food because of these other issues. Anyway, thank you again for all you do, and I pray for us.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak? No, you can't go. No, you can't go yet. Okay, Mr. You want to speak? Just state your name if you would.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Robinson representing Jonathan Creek. We have a RV park. I hadn't heard much talk about RV parks here in Maggie Valley, but there are a lot in Waynesville and Maggie Valley. We're one of them. And I know y'all guys know that we have six months to make what we make. It's not just RV parks, it's probably all the businesses. And three of ours is already gone or will be pretty soon. And so we got about three months if we get opened up. You know, the way I read the, and I may be mistaken, but the way I read the phases, it doesn't say anything much in there about RVs, parks, but it, I assume we're in phase three, if that's what y'all guys do with motels. And it's not one size fits all for the government, it's not one size for the state, it's not one size for the county, you know? I know Gastonia, I guess they opened up, that's what I heard. They didn't, Lincolnon, the county was going to, they didn't either. Okay, well, I, I heard they were, but mistaken. But you know, you can't, even, even one size fits all for the, for the motels and campgrounds can't be the same. I mean, to me, it's not because I run a campground, it's, but campground is probably the best place for someone to be in the wide open places. We're 20 to 30 feet apart in our sites and, you know, you add the sun, to me, that would be a great place to hunker down and try to get, be safe at this place. But I'm not going to go over what everybody else has. Y'all get the gist of all of that, but I appreciate your time and just think about one size don't, doesn't fit all, not for the state or the counties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is anyone else that would like to speak? State your name if you would.
My name is Melanie Williams. Good morning. Thank you, all of you, for what you're doing. I cannot imagine the pressure you're under. I just want to bring up something that I haven't heard. I'm the mother of a almost 16-year-old and a 10-year-old and I'm incredibly fearful of the precedent we're setting. Our country has gotten to a place where we're so terrified of every illness that we don't really live quality lives. We don't talk about healthy lifestyles, we don't talk about nutrition, we don't talk about supplementing, we don't talk about supporting our immune system. All we talk about is pharmaceuticals, vaccines, medical intervention. I see people all the time comment how there's no treatment for COVID-19. That is absolutely patently untrue. There are a lot of incredibly effective treatments for this that do not have life-risking side effects. And I'm sure that most of us know about the high-dose vitamin C combined with zinc, the hydrochloroquine treatments that are working wonders, curing people, bringing them back to health in a matter of days. So we really need to take a responsibility in this county to shift the narrative. As of right now, the Haywood County Health and Human Services Board has not one representation from the medical community that is not allopathic in nature. That means pharmaceutically driven. We need to represent our chiropractors, we need to represent our naturopaths, we need to represent our homeopaths in this community because we're surrounded by nature, we're surrounded by potential for healing, but we're so focused on prevention of illness. We've locked down this county to save a population who's incredibly valuable, but would be easy to isolate, the elderly, the obese, people with diabetes. And because of them, you know, they are, they are valuable, we've taken all of the rights and freedoms away from people who also deserve to be protected. My children are completely stressed out, freaked out, concerned for their entire future. My daughter, who's almost 16, who should be in a phase of excitement about the life ahead of her, is fearful because she doesn't know when the government will decide again to take everything away from her, to take her connections, to take her education on a whim. And that's exactly what's happened here. We know now that the model that was used to justify the shutdown of our entire economy was false, the Imperial College model that said 2.2 million people would die from this illness. Then the same person who constructed that model within nine days backed off and said, oh, 220,000. And then it was 80,000 and then it was 60,000. But the measures that were put in place because of the original model are still here. We're still living with them. It was a false prediction, we acted on it and we're still living with it. 16 ill people, that's all we hear. It gets dropped like a bomb in the newspaper every day, five more people tested positive. Are they asymptomatic? Do they struggle? Do they go to the hospital? Did they die? Is it a mild fever, a cough, a cold and then they're fine? They convalesce at home and go back to life? None of that is shared with the community. It's just a panic, oh my gosh, five more cases. Were they, did they come in to get tested because they'd been exposed and they were fearful and then they never developed any symptoms? Why is this information not being shared with the public? We need to know it. It's a fear-driven narrative and it's hurting our community. And there's been negligence, in my opinion, on the part of the media and the part on the Health Department of not educating people, not telling them, make sure that you're upping your vitamin D, make sure that you're upping your vitamin C, get activity, practice stress release instead of just this constant, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. And, and what about tracking those people, sharing with us what their experiences were so we actually know what COVID-19 in Haywood County looks like? Because I tell you what, I would take a cold, I would nurse my children through a cold to have kept our lives going and not been exposed to the extreme terror and stress and isolation. I had several people confront me in the grocery store the other day as they wore their fabric masks about the fact that I wasn't wearing a fabric mask and I wasn't walking the right direction in the grocery store. This is absurd. We have lost our minds. Logic has left the building and we want to be a county that practices logical, common-sense decisions based on the heritage of hardiness that it took to survive in these mountains for so very long. So I ask you to stand up for this county and for the life that we've all built here and reopen Haywood County, please.
Anyone else like to speak this morning? Okay, see, close the public comment. Okay, our next, our next order of business is constituent concerns. Do you have anything, Tommy, you want to start? Tommy, do you have any constituent concerns?
Oh. Yeah, I think I've had probably the busiest several weeks of my tenure here, so answering, answering text messages and emails and phone calls. Many of the concerns shared here today, I've, I've heard, I think I've actually answered some emails from some of you folks. Yeah, that, that pretty well sums it up.
Brandon?
Just echo the same. I've had, one of my busiest times since I've been a commissioner and tried responding as well. I may have missed a few of you. If I have, I apologize, but always try to respond to every phone call and every text message and I know we'll be discussing some of this later, but that's all I have.
Anything, Kurt?
No, that's the same here. I've, I've had a lot of constituent concerns in regards to the COVID and how we're going to handle things, so, and I know we're talking about that at the end of the regular agenda.
Okay, then Mark.
Seems to be that a lot of people don't think we're listening. We really are listening and we do hear you. We just got to figure out a way to pattern what needs to happen in Haywood County along with the rules that we are bound to abide by. Now, the gentleman brought the Constitution. I believe in the Constitution 100%, but part of that says we have to follow the chain. Unfortunately, the chain for most everything that is done in Haywood County begins with the governor. Not going to pass the buck on him, however, that's where the majority of the shutdowns lie. We controlled the motels, short-term rentals, things like that. But other than that, we are simply responding to what we are told to do. You can't go out here and violate the law just because you disagree with it. I think there's going to be some discussions had after this is over with about the precedent that was set here. Now, does that mean there's going to be changes? Who knows? This is something this country has never encountered before. If this were a war, we know how to deal with that. If this were natural disasters, we know how to deal with that. This society has never experienced it. There were people who experienced it back in the early 1900s, but those people aren't here today to tell us what we need to do. Be patient. I understand what you're going through. I really do. And we're trying to do what's right for everyone. We're not trying to put anyone out of business and we're not trying to hurt anyone. We're just trying to figure out with the experts we have available to us, the best course for Haywood County. So I just ask for your patience.
Okay, I'm going to, please, don't, don't retalk. Sorry. I'm going to ask Patrick Johnson to come up, our health director, and then our medical health director, Dr. Javon's here this morning. And also I'll just say that I hope I've answered all the emails. I know I've answered about a half a dozen today and I probably have missed some, so, but I have, we have all tried to diligently answer as many as we can.
Thank you. So we just wanted to run some data by you and a few other things. The first part of the month, April 2 through 17, we had a grant, a total of five cases. And then the first three days of April 27 through 29, we had five new cases and all five of those folks had no idea how they were exposed. On April 30, we had five new cases in one day. And May 5, when I sent this, these slides to Tracy, we had one case and then at the end of the day, we had one more case. And that's why on Saturday morning, you saw the press release that we had another case. So we actually had two cases on May 1st. So that last week, we had 12 cases. So if you just look at that graph that we put together, the power of social distancing, why the leap in cases? Well, the first five cases, all social-isolated, as soon as they were symptomatic, they knew how they had been exposed. They were essentially notified right away. That was not the case with the last cases that we had. They did not know how they had been exposed and it is an example of community transmission and how, how it happens and how rapidly it can occur. So the good news, as you all know, we did the targeted surveillance study of asymptomatic workers in high-contact occupations. We tested 283 individuals who worked in various grocery stores, high-box stores, a variety of various stores where there were a lot of people going through where these folks did not wear masks, who could be infected with the virus while not showing symptoms and potentially infected, infecting others, and all 283 people were negative. And so the bad news is, we had, I wrote down 11, there were 12 cases last week who discovered they were infected through community transmission. It's Monday, I will tell you, just, we're just starting out this week. I don't expect that we're not going to not have cases this week. When community spread, when there's community spread, contact tracing is challenging because it's not always possible to determine where the contact came from and who's been exposed. That's what we're dealing with right now. The folks can only tell us their contacts, but sometimes they actually don't know how they were exposed. So I'll let Dr. Javon tell you a little bit more.
So thank you for giving us the time to talk about this. So here are the things that we know. And what I want to cover just briefly is what we know, what we don't know and how we might go forward. Up, louder. So these are the things that we know, you can read all this. And it seems to me that our conversation has evolved to pitting health versus economy and really when it's about preserving health and economy. So let me set a little context here for the things that I'm going to say. And it's going to require your imagination a bit. So I envision this like a pot of water on the stove. So here's the burner, here's the pot, here's the lid. Inside the pot is virus and infection. The height of the flame underneath that pot really depends on the amount of contact between people, especially those infected. The flame is turned down by social distancing, avoiding crowds and staying at home. Getting infected is not just about exposure to the virus, it's also about the virus getting on you and then the virus has to get in you and then your immune system has to be overwhelmed and that's when people get sick. So public health measures break that chain of transmission. Hand washing, disinfecting surfaces, not touching your face, masks, do all of this. It's like putting some pasta into the boiling water, slows the boiling down. And then there's testing and contact tracing, which is the way that we help to keep the lid on. That prevents the water from boiling over and making a mess. And so people isolating themselves as soon as they get sick so that we can test, track, find the contacts and quarantine them so they don't spread any further is really the key to effective contact tracing. So what's happened so far? In March, with so much unknown and without us knowing what was going on, without the ability to tell because there was not the capacity to test, we had no choice but to hammer down and lock things down to try and get a grasp of things. As of 10 days ago, it appeared that we had hammered enough. And I think anybody who looked at this from a month before would have been very surprised pleasantly at where we were at 10 days ago. And as Patrick mentioned, we had this study that really confirmed very little floating around the county. But then we had this spike in cases last week, conflicting signals there. Seems as though we've caught just a point where things might be changing. So either the nail wasn't hammered in enough or the hammers backed out a bit. In the first five cases, people isolated themselves early and this gave us the ability to do effective contact tracing. All the contacts were found, quarantined, tested and quarantined or treated, they all recovered. So from my perspective, that was a done deal. But now we've had this spike and we did not have the early isolation that we had with the first five cases. And in fact, we know that contact tracing now will not be as effective for the very reasons Patrick mentioned. The heat's been turned up, folks. The lid on the pot is jiggling and our ability to stabilize it before it bubbles over has been hampered. And so you see the curve that Patrick put up there going like this. The numbers may be small, but that's the same curve you've seen in every hotspot around the world. And with an incubation period of up to 14 days, what we're seeing in these cases this past week is actually the result of exposure from somewhere one to two weeks before. We don't yet know what, what's going to happen with those. We don't know what's going to surface from those. And that's why you hear Patrick saying he's not going to be surprised if we see additional cases this coming week. So I hope that we've done enough in this county to tamp down this curve. In the best-case scenario, scenario, what we'll see is that these cases will level off and go down pretty quickly. And that would put us in the same favorable position that we were in 10 days ago. But we know not everyone in the county has abided by the public health recommendations. What we do know is, for what we've had up till now, that's been enough. The question is, will it still be enough? And right now, we don't know the answer to that question. And to boot, we're surrounded by four states who are all opening up. And I think we can anticipate that this is going to contribute to our flame being turned up higher. However, it's also something we can watch and it's something that we can learn from their experiment. But we also have to acknowledge the worst-case scenario here. Last week, we saw the cases go from two to five to 10 to 12. And at that doubling rate, if that persists, that becomes this week, 25, 50 and 100. And the next week, that becomes 200 and 400 and beyond, so that by the middle of May, our pots bubbled over. That would translate into roughly 10 to 20 people on ventilators, 60 to 100 people in the hospital and deaths. And despite what some people think, if you look at the most recent CDC data from the end of last week, 43% of the deaths, not the people sick, the deaths in the country. the deaths in the country have been under the age of 75. Now, the hospital's prepared and the hospital's ready, but even those numbers are gonna push the limits of the capacity at the hospital. And more, once we recognize, if that curve continues to go up and intervene, it's still gonna take about 21 days to see that increase level off, not to mention weeks for it to get back to the level that we're at even right now. That's been the experience everywhere in the world. And I would remind you that over those six or seven weeks, that would put us well into the summer to even get back to where we are. These are the metrics we're gonna be following. And you can look at those metrics. The one that I think is the most important in all of that is gonna be the metric at the bottom. Because that's gonna be the hardest to track, the hardest to trace. We know that everybody is not seen fit to follow through with the public health recommendations, but enough have. And for those who say, "Look, we don't have many cases here", well, that's because the measures have worked, it wasn't inevitable. And with more heat, we're gonna need more participation to keep up, not less. Nine out of 10 is not enough because this virus doesn't spread like a blanket over everybody in the county, and some get it and some don't. It spreads in clusters. You start here, the cluster expands, spreads beyond that group, you get another cluster. So nine out of 10 is not enough. For the businesses that wanna reopen, and I'm with you because I understand the pain you guys are feeling, the question is, what can you do to organize your place of work so people do comply? Residents and visitors alike. For people in the hospitality industry, it's not just your place of business. I know you can make that safe. What will you do so visitors see fit to follow these recommendations when they go out and about in the community and honor the situation that we're in in Haywood County? And to the tourist industry, I'd say, will visitors even wanna come if we're a hotspot two weeks from now? If the worst case happens and we have to bring down the hammer harder, what will that do to your business for the entire summer? So what we can do, and what can we do in our community to help those with the disaster relief funds that are out there so people can weather this? And to those of you who complain about reopening and have not seen fit to be on board with the public health recommendations, I'd recommend you go look in the mirror because that's who you should be complaining to. So it's not about health versus economy. It's about preserving health and preserving economy. The tour like Siamese twins join at the hip, where one leads, the other follows, and vice versa. So this is how the dance is gonna go now. There isn't gonna be an off switch, there isn't gonna be a time in the foreseeable future when we can declare victory and have a parade to celebrate. And if we've learned anything from the 1918 pandemic, we don't wanna have a parade anyway. What we have here is not a problem with an easy solution. What we have is a dilemma, a never-ending balancing act, multiple valuable but competing options. The hammer and the reopening dance is our best strategy to navigate what's going to be a roller coaster ride, steps forward, steps back, trying to keep the lid on the pot. And so, no one knows the future. So I would recommend that we not get caught up in all the what-ifs. Let's focus on what now, while we're figuring out where we're going. Let's focus on what each of us can do right now to keep the lid on. That's our best chance to preserve health and the economy. So I thank you for your time. I thank everyone here in the audience for their comments, much appreciated. And be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody having questions for Dr. Javon? Go ahead, Mark.
Dr. Javon, a lot of people have said, "Let's open and see what happens, and if we need to, we can always close it back down." I understand kind of why they would say that. Can you explain what might happen if we chose to do something like that?
The question, Mark, is really gonna be, what happens to this curve? And when that curve accelerates beyond a certain point, our ability to rein it back in gets harder and harder. And that's what I mean, the pot boils, the lid starts to jiggle. You can turn down the heat, but you may not be able to turn that heat fast enough to get it to bubble out all over the side, and then we're into a real mess. The extreme death rate that you've seen in certain places around the country have been places where the healthcare system has been overwhelmed and can't even take care of the people who don't have COVID who are sick. And that's the real risk here from a healthcare standpoint. If we open up, can we tell when the heat's rising more? Can we tell when the pressure is getting high enough that the lid starts jiggling? And can we turn it back down in time before the lid blows all the way off? That's the challenge with opening up. I understand where all these folks who have spoken here today are coming from. And whatever we do, when we open up, it's gonna require the participation of everybody in the county, business owners and residents, to do the measures that we can do to make it safe as possible. Even then, it might not work. But unless we have everybody participating, that's what gives us our best chance to preserve health and preserve economy. The answer?
That's a good answer. Treatment-wise, I know there's a lot of things out there, and I understand just enough of medicine to be dangerous in certain situations. However, if there was truly a treatment for a virus, would we not be able to ship a bunch of that in here and be ready for when this happens?
Well, as some people have alluded to here, there's a long process to approving any kind of treatment. And I think the history of medicine is all too full of stories of things that seemed early on like it was gonna be the magic bullet, but when it really gets tested and used, turns out not to be. So I think when you hear the experts talking about going slow to test and prove these things, that's what they're talking about. I think the one thing we don't wanna do is introduce something that seems great but then harms people. That rule kinda gets bent when you have people who are at the end of life, where they're going to die, and maybe you wanna try some things that are a little bit more experimental. But that's not the majority of folks who are dealing with this. Then you've got the issue of just production. You know, once you discover what it is, can you ramp it up to do it? And do small places like us, at the end of the supply chain, how readily can we get something like that? So although it'd be nice to have that, that magic bullet, if you look at the studies to date, there are lots of anecdotal studies that will say this works or this works. You saw it with hydroxychloroquine, was supposed to be a magic bullet. When it's tested further, it's found to be actually dangerous for a lot of folks. This is what I'm talking about. So, excuse me. I'll be happy to review the data with you some point. Yeah, please, let's do that. In any event, we don't have a magic bullet right now. If and when it gets discovered, then you've got a whole supply chain that you have to deal with and a distribution part.
The last one I hear a lot of is, everyone should go ahead and get the disease, the virus, so that we can build up an immunity because we're currently not allowing people to build up an immunity. If we allowed to do that, we have, it's my understanding, we have no control at this juncture who lives and who dies. You either live or you die because we don't know what to do for you with the data that you're talking about. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, I think it's more than that. I think we know that probably 80% of people who get the virus will recover and be fine. We know that 15% of the people will get sick enough to be hospitalized. And we know that 5% of the people are the ones who are very serious, end up on ventilators and a lot of whom die. What's being left out of that conversation a little bit is what is the recovery period for the people who get really sick? And it's prolonged for some, and if they recover, ever. Hurt immunity will work, but hurt immunity takes a long time to develop. Estimates for the contagious, based on the contagiousness of COVID, this coronavirus, is that we would need 60 or 70% of the population to be immune in order to begin to have hurt immunity. Now, if we're willing to tolerate 2% or 3%, 4% of the population dying, another 10% or 15% of the population getting really seriously ill and having long-term effects that they never recover from, then hurt immunity might, I mean, doing that, as you suggest, might be a reasonable strategy. That's what you're seeing in Sweden. We'll see how that experiment plays out. But if you extrapolate that to numbers in the United States, it goes well beyond the early estimates of the Royal College. And it goes well beyond the estimates of what we have right now. So although eventually we'd like to have hurt immunity, and certainly once we get a vaccine, we'll be closer to that for people who are willing to do that, then we can use hurt immunity. Thing about hurt immunity is you don't have to have everybody to be immune, but you have to have a critical mass. And so the people who choose not to either get sick or not to be vaccinated, that's fine. They're living off what other people do, that's their choice that we have. Did that answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other commissioners have a question?
Can I make one other comment, Kevin?
Sure.
So for folks in the community, I've been trying to do a daily video. It's been put up on some of the papers. I'm trying to give people the straight scoop of what's happening in Haywood County and try to take what's happening that we're all hearing on the national news that pertains to maybe this place or that place, and sort of bring that home to us. I'd invite people to look for those. I'm not trying to convince you of anything, I'm just laying out the data as it is on those. You can draw your own conclusions. I would say that also, there are certainly hotspots like New York and Detroit, and New Orleans and places like that, and New Jersey now. But I'd also point out places like Albany, Georgia, population 75,000, similar to Haywood County, and what's happened there, from two outbreaks from clusters around two funerals. I'd also point out to people in Iowa, which is not really locked down, which has, I think it's Sioux City, where they have like 1,300 cases, a lot related to the meatpacking plants. This happens in clusters. And we don't know where the cluster's coming from. And that's what we're trying to be on top of as the Health Department and get what clues we can by following these metrics to see where we are and to monitor so that whatever you guys choose to do, whatever we choose to do as a community, we can try and get to it before the lid starts to jiggle and the pot blows off. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Javon. Okay. We'll move on to administrative agency reports and introduction of new county employees. We have our county manager, Brian Morehead, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only four today. We have Allison Hartso, Social Worker, Health and Human Services; Cora Gentry, Detention Officer for the Sheriff's Office; Heather Cagle, Telecommunicator of 911; and John Kidd, G.I.S. Coordinator for Land Records.
Okay, thank you. And of course, they're not here today, so. But we appreciate them coming to work for Haywood County. Okay, on the discussion adjustment of agenda, does anybody have anything for that? Okay, next I'll move to our consent agenda. If you have any questions, we'll come back to anything that I fill over at the end of the reading all of them. Our first order, or our first item is to request approval of the April 6, 2020 regular meeting minutes and the April 20, 2020 cancellation of regular meeting minutes. Number two is to request approval of the following forms required by Federal Emergency Management Agency. First is a resolution for designation of applicant's agent, which is attachment 3. Second is the State Applicant Disaster Assistance Agreement, that's under attachment 4. Number three, the third item is to request approval of budget amendments, the first being from the General Fund for the Wellness Clinic, $20,000 in additional funding needed from contingency to cover the lab work that has increased in cost. That's under attachment 5. Next, under the General Fund would be Emergency Pandemic, Haywood Healthcare Foundation Grant of $20,525 to appropriate the contributions made to the county from Haywood Healthcare Foundation to cover COVID-19 testing of workers who have been exposed to the general population. That's under attachment 6. Next, under C would be, from the General Fund, Public Health, Pisgah Health Foundation is a $10,000 grant to appropriate the grant from the Pisgah Health Foundation to Haywood County, or rather, to Haywood Christian Ministries for COVID-19 services that they provide. That's under attachment 7. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, another discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. The first item is to request approval of the following agreements pertaining to the receipt of 5307 Urban Transit Funds and approval for the county manager to execute said agreements. And we have our Finance Director, Julie Davis.
Good morning. You will probably remember talking about the urban transportation. This is different from the rural operating transportation funding. The city of Asheville is receiving some federal funds, and the county is able to be a sub-recipient of these federal funds. So this agreement is between the city of Asheville and Haywood County so that we can accept these funds once we do certain reporting and they receive the funds and allocate them to us. So that's what the first one is about. The second one is about the agreement between Mountain Projects, who does our transportation in Haywood County. Haywood County doesn't actually do that ourselves. We have Mountain Projects do that for us. So the second one is for Mountain Projects to be an even more sub-recipient of these federal funds through the city of Asheville, through Haywood County, and through Mountain Projects for the urban transportation.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? So do we wanna do the first one?
Yes, we probably should do them both.
Okay, so let's, first will be approval of a sub-recipia and sub-allocation agreement between Haywood County and the city of Asheville for 57, I mean, I'm sorry, for 5307 Federal Transit Administration Funds and approval for the county manager to execute said agreement. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, another discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next one is approval of agreement between Haywood County and Mountain Projects Incorporated to administer the 5307 Federal Transit Funds for public transit and approval for county manager to execute said agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Patsy, did you wanna say anything? Patsy, you're here this morning. Did you wanna say anything, you or I? Okay, appreciate y'all being here this morning. Okay, our next item of the regular agenda is to request approval to reject bid for the Law Enforcement Center Firewall Project from Johnson Controls based on the cost being over budget. Operations Director, Chris Boyd, is here to talk about that. That's under attachment 10.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. We bid this project about six or seven weeks ago. The project came in way over the budget. I'm asking you to reject that bid. I'd like to rebid this project again.
Okay. Can I, I'll entertain a motion to request approval to reject the bid for the Law Enforcement Center Firewall Project from Johnson Controls based on the cost being over budget.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, another discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the third item of the regular agenda is to request approval of the following items pertaining to the Corrective Action Plan Restrictive Cover Construction Project at Francis Farm Landfield. Program Administrator David Francis is here this morning. Well, maybe he's not here. I tell you what, we'll... Okay, we're into the third item there, Dave, just go ahead.
My apologies, I had to go answer a call from the call center that needed my help, so my apologies. Commissioners, this has been a long road. You know, I started working on the Francis Farm Project back in 2007 when the issue came about that we received a notice from the Department of Environmental Quality, the Solid Waste Section, that we had not complied with one of their requests from 2004. We had gotten a notice of violation in 2004 concerning about methane monitoring and groundwater contamination or having a plan for groundwater contamination. The floods of 2004 came along, Francis and I had hit. That went up on the shelf, and it didn't get addressed. Had an inspector came back around and said, "Hey, it's time that you all figure out to do something on this, or we're gonna issue a notice of violation again." And so the county at that time started an earnest run at trying to solve the issues out at Francis Farm. The methane gas issue, there was, we had methane monitoring wells up against the property, and the property next to it, as we call it, is the Lewis Property. Lewis Property, and then the Raccoon Creek goes through there. And so that was an issue, and then again, we... And then again, we did not have a groundwater monitoring plan in place. So, one of the things that we first started working on was trying to get the methane. We started with a methane monitoring plan and found out that our levels were in far, far in exceedance of what they needed to be with the state. We began at that time putting new methane monitoring wells in throughout the landfill. We, 2009, we put several new methane monitoring wells there. And then, I was lucky enough to write a grant with the Department of Energy for North Carolina. And we received a grant to be able to actually expand the monitoring wells and put, and put energy back on the grid. And so, what we did at that time is we put new wells in and we also put a racetrack in there to collect leachate, to help get some of the leachate out of there. Because what this project is ultimately going to do is restrict rain flow down through the landfill. So, we're able to collect the leachate, which is storm water, rainwater going through landfill, hitting the trash, becomes rather nasty stuff there. Their term is leachate. So, we've moved through this project very slowly and methodically over thirteen years till we get to here about putting a restrictive cover on there. As it then, when the landfill was closed in 1993, it was closed accordingly to what the terms and the circumstances were then. Unfortunately, we didn't do a job of doing cap maintenance. So, when we were fortunate, very fortunate enough that we got soil from the expansion of the 209 project, when they widened 209 right there at the Tuscaloosa Interchange, to bring a hundred thousand cubic yards of soil. And we stockpiled that over on what we call the Shelton property, which is right behind the bus garage. And then, we, there was some still more soil available. So, we did the first cap maintenance proj-- first cap maintenance project there in 2016, where we put another forty-three thousand cubic yards of soil on top of the cap. So, one of the things that we found out during this is that there was waste put outside the limits of where we first thought there was waste put in. And then, when we were doing the groundwater monitoring testing that we started back in 2007, we found out that there was enes, benzene, trichlorolitheine, dichlorolitheine. And as I've been told, that enes are the bad stuff. And you don't imagine that. So, what, so the groundwater is contaminated and it's going over to the Lewis property. One of the things that the county manager and I, our dove, worked on is we purchased the property next to us, the Lewis property. So, that solved a big, huge lawsuit coming that we contaminated somebody's property. And also, it got rid of one of the notices of violations. Where we had the methane, the exceedances were on the property line. We were able to extend the landfill boundary and move it to the edge of the Lewis property. And so, that stopped the NOV for the methane monitoring. So, as we proceeded on, there was no other way to be able to do anything else on this except expand the restrictive cover over the landfill. Because once we, because we thought that the, you know, the contamination was just up at the cap and leaking through, and then there was more waste outside of that heading down to the Lewis property. So, what this project does is that there's, you know, when you've been out there, there's the trees on that side. This will be completely grubbed out, done, taken down, down to the ground. And then, what we'll start doing is this restrictive cover. We'll start moving soil from the Shelton property over to the landfill and start restricting rain flow. Because, let's see if I remember my math right. One inch of rain over an acre is twenty-seven thousand plus gallons of water. So, of a twenty-acre site, you can imagine how much one inch of rain is there, going in through there, and it's going to contamination. So, the problem is, is that we have, you know, a landfill that is unlined. In nineteen, you know, seventy, when it's open, it was unlined. So, that was, that's why it was able, the contaminants were able to leak out and contaminate the groundwater. And as you know, Raccoon Creek flows through there. And so, we've been doing monitoring testing ever since, doing, talking, you know, with our engineers. You know, we do biannual twice a year. We do testing of the contaminants. And we also pay particularly close attention to that surface water at Raccoon Creek. Because that's one of the things that with this program we're stopping is we're suffocating the landfill out. So, the theory is, is that by the time we get done, if there was one drop of rain actually made it to the bottom of the landfill, it would take ten years to get there with the cover that we're putting on. So, when they start the project, they'll put anywhere between a foot to six feet of soil, then six inches of backfill, and then a geo membrane liner, which is about as thick as a credit card. It's a plastic liner on top. And then, we'll put another thirty inches of soil and another six inches width for a cover, for vegetative covering. And that way, we'll start suffocating the rainwater out of that for the landfill. So, this is what, when you hear restrictive cover, that's what they're talking about. We'll also continue taking leachate out through our program. We'll still continue monitoring the gas wells that we have there, continue removing the methane gas that way. And we have a flare that's out there, part of the grant that we did. We'll be able to burn the methane off from there as well, too. So, that's what's gotten us from here to where we got to where it's time to accept the bids of the project. So, we first started out with ten potential bidders because this is a landfill project and it's a very specialized, you know, project where just, you know, a regular excavator can't do it. This is somebody that has to have experience in dealing with landfills. And this is the reverse, you know? Before, we're used to digging, building landfill, we dig it out with the liner in. Now, we're doing the reverse of that. We're actually putting more soil on it, putting the liner on that to help suffocate the rainwater out. So, we got to, you know, we've been working on this. We, 2017, we came up with the, what's called the assess it for corrective measures, which is the restrictive, putting the restrictive cover on there was what was approved by DEQ. We had a public hearing in July of 2018. And then, that went to DEQ and it was ultimately approved. So, we've been back and forth with a couple of things. As we've put soil on different components of the landfill, we had that tested as well to make sure that the weight and the pressure of the new soil on there, that that, that it could hold that. So, we've had to go back and readdress some of those issues. So, it's been a very well thought out and a very long process of time. So, we get to the point where we're getting to the bids with the landfill contractors. And of course, it looks a whole lot different when we started this back in November when we started to put the bids out. We got to February of this year and we only had one bidder show up. McGill worked with the other bidders and said, hey, we're just too busy. Things are, you know, going too well. It's, ultimately, you know, it's a pretty small project. It's not a small project to us, that's for sure. It's a small project to them. We subsequently, we returned that bid and we rebid it again because another contractor said that they would be interested in it because they had a job that they were supposed to work on that got put on hold. And luckily, when that came, when we opened the bids again, the both contract, we had two contracts. The first bid, we can't open up because we didn't have three bids by North Carolina statute. So, we had to give that back. So, when we rebid, you have, we had two, just two bids. We're able to open those up and proceed where we are today with that. Any questions so far? Okay, great, thank you.
Dave, just a comment.
Sure.
You might want to elaborate on a little bit. I know that me and Tommy are part of the Solid Waste Board. But, one thing with what you said about the money that was set aside, if you don't mind elaborating on that. I mean, I know we're in a time right now where we need to be watching every penny. But at the same time, that is money that can't be used for nothing else and it was put aside for that, so...
So, when, we knew that the expense of this project was going to be a big expense. And so, we adjusted the solid waste availability fee five years ago. With the sixth year coming up, we adjusted that to anticipate the cost of this. And so, the solid waste availability fee goes to pay for solid waste cost running the White Oak landfill, transportation of the, of the waste and recycling from the convenience centers and running the MRF. And it also pays for those employees of those facilities. And the, we've been setting money aside for Francis Farm. So, Haywood County still has two landfills. There's one thing that you, that you get to keep forever, and that's a landfill. You're responsible for it forever. And that was one of the reasons that we did the agreement with Sand Tech was to take some of these closure and post-closeer cost off of us because we could see what...
Okay, we've had a short recess because we had a power glitch and it knocked out our streaming as well as our taping. So, go ahead, David.
Okay.
If you can remember when the, when the lights blinked.
I just got accused of breaking the camera. So, the, I don't know exactly where the flicker happened, but I'll just go back and recap just real quickly that we did have two bids. And, you know, they were over, you know, what our estimate was. So, the Haywood County team sat down with the McGill, our engineers of record for the Francis Farm project and went through this to try to reduce the cost to get it back into budget. And we were successful in reducing the cost down for the project. We put the stream crossing to the side. We put it to the side. And so, when you hear the budget amendment, the stream crossing is in there. But doesn't necessarily mean that we will do it now. What, we won't, those folks who, T and K are, you know, landfill guys, not bridge builders, not stream crossers. And so, we talked to folks who do that and they thought that we could come in under budget there, what we originally thought. So, when you hear the budget amendment, it does have that in there at the time being, but doesn't necessarily mean that we'll do that part of the project. So, we reduced the overall budget from, down from six point eight million dollars down to five million, four hundred, ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. So, everybody sharpened their pencils. T and K was willing to help us out on these items. And one of the things that we, we saw that we could do cheaper was that one of the things that we were running sewer up from where the flare is, up to the bus garage. And we, we're going to do that a heck of a lot cheaper than what T and K could do it. So, though, and we eliminated a few things along the way and worked with them to reduce cost. You know, they helped, we helped them understand what the project was and the soil that was coming, you know, that we got from the 209 project, that there was not a lot of rock and it didn't have to be screened so fine. So, we're able to reduce some of those costs along the way once they got a better idea and handle where that soil was from instead of digging into a rock bed. So, so what we're going to be doing, again, is moving about two hundred thousand cubic yards of soil all the way around on this project. You know, to smother it out. And it seems odd, you know, that this is, you know, this is what we're doing, doesn't it? You know, that, you know, but you have to, you know, because everybody thinks we're just moving dirt from one place to the other. But it has the purpose. We're trying to save the groundwater. And that's what, and this is going to take some time as well, too. The testing will not stop once we're done with this project. We'll be testing for the next forty years to make sure that this is working. We'll have a good idea if this is working in ten years. It's not immediate. It's not overnight. But it will take time to get this accomplished. But we're doing this, you know, to protect, you know, you know, the groundwater, make sure it doesn't get into Raccoon Creek. You know, those are the reasons that we're doing this. It wasn't, you know, that we, you know, thought that this, you know, that, you know, like I said, we had those NOVs that we had to address and then we'll be out of the, out of the notice of violations when we have this done. I said, DEQ has been working well with us throughout this and they know that we have been trying to get something done and complete this project. So, this is the last phase. This project will last about a year to get done. We, it will, you know, take a lot of van hours from Chris, Randy and myself as well to, as well as the engineers. We'll have two engineer working on it. McGill will be handling the construction administration. Benell Lammens, who does our testing, will be there to test. It's called CQA, Construction Quality Assurance. And it's part of the administrative code when we're doing landfills that all this, the testing, that you have a third party verifying that what the work's being done. So, they'll be testing the soil compaction, you know, how the soil is placed, the liner, the geocomposite. They'll be testing all of that. They'll almost have a dedicated person out there during the entire time of the project. McGill will have about, somebody twenty to twenty-five hours a week out there as well, too. So, it's no small project. It's taken a lot of cooperation and teamwork to get this to where we are now. So, again, the bid where we're at is five million, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars.
When are they going to start? When's the project going to start?
Well, with the signing of the notice of award today, then they will get their bonds in. And so, we'll hopefully start sometime late this month or early in June.
Okay.
David, do you remember what year this landfill was put in service?
It's right, seventy-two, seventy-four, somewhere right through there.
When they didn't have regulations.
Yeah. But just, just a comment. You know, our forefathers and the previous county commissioners, no ones that filed on this. This was standard operating procedure to do a landfill like that one, you know, was operated. But, you know, in meetings with other people across the state, other commissioners, this is something that, I guess if you could say misery loves company, there's other people in the same boat we're in, all across the state. Because these old landfills that were put in under those previous non-existent guidelines, which created a problem for groundwater, there's other people having to go back and take measures like we're having to do across the state, so...
Correct. Because in nineteen seventy-six, the EPA then started, called Subtitle D, started making landfills at that point in time be lined at that time. So, that's what's helped. And the other thing that, you know, that just caught us, you know, was that the amount of contamination that was in the landfill. I'm not pointing fingers, I don't know where to point fingers. But there, you know, there was more than just household waste that we're dealing with in there as well, too. You know, you don't get, you know, you know, there's not, in White Oak landfill, there's not benzene, trichlorolitheine, there's none of that in there.
Yeah.
It's taken elsewhere.
You know, this has been a hot topic across the county for years, for years. It's been brought up during elections. It's been brought up many times. But, you know, this thing's driven by state regulations and we could be under penalty of severe fine if we don't comply. And, you know, when going over all these numbers, I know Julie gave her blessings on it and there's a lot of foresight by people before I got here to set aside funding. And this, this, this money has been set aside on people's, you know, their tax bill, on their landfill fee. It's been set aside, it's been earmarked for this project. It was very well thought out and the dirt that you actually got off the 209 project, that saved no telling how many, well, I think you mentioned it.
We estimated it saved us about a million dollars in soil cost.
That saved us about a million dollars by having enough foresight to grab that dirt while it was available. And, you know, the project, when you talk about putting a rubber cover over twenty acres, that's, that's a pretty massive undertaking and then having to do all the dirt, having the dirt just right. I was looking over the contract and when you have to do a hot weld on a fabric like that and it has to pass inspection and, you know, it's, it's a very large undertaking. Working off your numbers, it always amazes me how much water weighs. You mentioned one inch is twenty, and how many gallons? It's twenty-seven thousand gallons. Well, we know a gallon weighs approximately, you know, close to eight pounds, seven point something. But, you know, the weight, the gallons, and you talk about twenty acres. One inch of rain is, is over half a million gallons. And so, all that water would have went down through that bad stuff. There is now.
It is now.
And so, we're, you know, encapsulating that, sealing it up like a can of beans and trying to, we'll meet, meet state regulations. So, again, this is something that's been a bear under my saddle. I talked to people higher up and asked the state for money. And some of my correspondence with our elected officials and higher than us, and they just laughed at me. with our elected officials and higher than us, and they just laughed at me. You know, they, they just dropped it back on the counties. You know, we did everything by the book. Our forefathers did, it was no fault of our own. And I made the argument to some folks and they just said, well, if we started doing that to every county across the state, do you know what that would do for our budget? And so we're stuck with it. But thanks to the foresight, you know, that money's available. It's sitting there and this project has to be done. So there's, it's, it's time to move on it.
I've got a few things. This, once we complete this, can we lower the landfill fee? Or is it going to have to remain up if we postpone this stream crossing?
With the.
Is the money there when we rebid this in the spring of 2021 to go ahead and pay for it? Or are we going to have to leave the landfill fee or the solid waste fee at its current state while we wait on that to happen?
No, the, we've set the money aside for the stream crossing. It's currently, it's, it's in the budget amendment today. We've set that aside. As for the availability fee, we are working on that probably at the next budget work session. We'll have a recommendation for, about the fee. You know, there's debate that, that we had about that, about, you know, should we get through the project totally and make sure that there's not anything there that, that bites us, that we, that we didn't anticipate, that we didn't think of, or something that was, you know, there before we lower it? Could we lower it some this year and then get through the project and lower it again? All of those things are being discussed and, and like I said, Tommy and Brandon and Bryant and Chris and I had that discussion with Julie last month as well, too. And, but I think, like I said, the next budget work session will have a recommendation for the, with the current availability fee.
Okay. Well, that was my concern was that if, as long as we're still going to be able to do it, as long as we've got the money set aside.
Yeah.
And we're going to be able to lower it. Because a lot of people have been understanding of why the fee is there and why it is at the level that it's at. But if we postpone it another year, I'm not real sure they're going to be that understanding.
Yeah. And so when, when we, when we raise the fee, Mr. Pliss, you know, we're looking at it as a 10-year plan to, one, to, you know, upgrade and expand, you know, the convenience centers as well. Francis Farm was in there, too. All, all of those in there to try to upgrade the facility. So we did, you know, Mooney Cove, we put new fencing, you know, around. We built the Crab Tree Convenience Center. We did upgrades along through there, but the part of that fee went to that as well, too, to make nicer facilities for our citizens to use. Because that's one thing that we know for sure is that about everybody in Haywood County uses a convenience center sooner or later. So, but we've made those, you know, cleaner, we've made them safer along the way. We still lack one project at the Fines Creek, needs an upgrade there as well. We were way, we've pushed it off a couple of times, but we're going to have to, you know, do something there as well. But that's the only other big project. We've been talking about a convenience center, you know, you know, making maybe more of a super convenience center on the eastern side of the county to where it would be, you know, you'd have, you know, metal, you know, expanded recycling opportunities and things like that as well. We've been talking about all of those things, you know, for the last, you know, four or five years as well, too. But we're getting, but I agree with you. I think it is, is getting time to, we'll have, it is ready to, you know, lower the availability fee. I can't promise it'll be this tax year, but I certainly hope in, in the next year for sure.
So the, the thing that you're talking about at Fines Creek, is that going to require us to leave it up? Or do you think we still have the money?
We have the money set aside.
I'm sorry?
We have the money set aside.
So there's no reason we couldn't really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can promise you, I've asked him about that every time I, he's turned around, he probably can tell you that. So we look at being able to lower it just how much is what we're questioning, so.
Okay.
And he's good. That's what I said.
But more of the both.
Exactly.
But there's a baseline as well, too.
Right. Most people understand the, the fact that there's always going to be something here, but I think the, just the fact of, of where it's at right now, this is the project that was consuming the majority of it. So if we can do that, then I'm all for it.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, it's always better to pay upfront. It's always better to pay in advance. It saves you a lot of money in the long run. And again, I, I give you accolades for that. Julie, I don't know if you were instrumental in fabricating that plan, but whoever, they, they done the county a favor, in my opinion, by going ahead and getting that paid forward.
I know it wasn't fun placing that landfill fee on there. We had a lot of questions when we did it. But I will say this about, you know, solid waste. I doubt the, the caretaking of solid waste or the disposability of solid waste is going to get any cheaper in the future. And so, I mean, whatever we can do to reduce the solid waste fee, we should do that. But on the other side of that is the fact that it, it's just, it's not. It's going to be more expensive, I would say, to get rid of solid waste in the future. And one day we won't have that landfill. And when we don't have the landfill, we'll have to pay for somebody else to take that. So we just need to be aware, aware of those things. And I'm sure on your committee that you, when you meet.
That whole conversation is changing, just like the COVID-19, I can tell you. There's different approaches, there's counties, you know, going together and having a multi-county landfill, which we accept, you know, waste from other counties. But incineration's getting to be a big thing around the world. There's some, some countries that's looking into that as a viable option. So there's all kinds of new ideas coming all along.
David, will the T and K be able to hire some local folks?
Yes, they, they'll, some laborers and they, we know that they have contacted with two contractors as well, too, to help them.
Okay. Well, I've always said that, you know, we talk about, well, the state ought to give us some money, but we put the stuff in the landfill and we're responsible for it. So it just makes sense that we have to pay for the fix. And I've always said also that if, I think if we could have hauled the garbage out in 1974, we would be a lot better off than what we've had to pay. I think we've paid more for the landfill past when we quit putting stuff in the landfill than we have, than it probably could cost to, to do it. So, but that's, that's kind of what we're faced with today. So I guess we were just a few years under the, before they got the liners in. And, you know, we do have industry here that, that fortunately we do have industry and that's probably another cost. A lot of areas don't have industry that we have. And so they probably didn't have problems with their landfill because they didn't have industry dumping into that. So, but we did have a couple of industries that did that. And unfortunately, that, that, that kind of created our problems, I guess. We can't say for sure, but we know that's where, that's where they came from because they didn't come from households, so. But they did provide jobs and everything. So this will be a, you know, the price to pay for, for that. So, and, and I know we, when we did raise the availability fee, we did that because of this, but also our availability fee was actually too low at the time. We weren't really covering all the solid waste, I don't think. And so we had to raise it to, to cover that. And then we had to raise a little bit more to take care of this. And I know if we haven't, if we did not privatize the landfill and the convenience centers that we have, we would be paying a lot more, probably north of $200 a year instead of $160.
On that estimate when we did it, it was, it was over two, it was 205, if I remember correctly, sir.
Yeah. So we, we would be paying a lot more if we hadn't privatized the landfill. So, and I think the savings was about $2 million a year almost for residents when we did that. So, so that's $2 million you get to keep in your pocket. So I appreciate, you know, the past boards being proactive and all that. Okay, so I guess we're, is anybody having other questions for Dave? Okay, so I'll entertain a mo, a motion that we approve to award the bid to T and K Construction LLC for the restrictive cover construction in the amount of $5,410,581,060 to be paid from the Solid Waste Special Revenue Fund, and that's under attachment 11.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that item? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next will be the approval of a contract to McGill Associates for Construction Administration Services in the amount of $219,500 to be paid from the Solid Waste Special Revenue Fund under attachment 12. Do I have, can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is the approval of a contract to Benell Lammens Engineering for Construction Quality Assurance in the amount of $273,500 to be paid from Solid Waste Special Revenue Fund.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
All these contracts, I'm sure they've been vetted and, and we've determined that this is the best deal, the best prices we can get. And also this is specialized. And so I know there's not some, but so many people that can, or so many entities that can provide these services, but I just want to make sure that the board has reviewed that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the last one in this group is the approval of a budget amendment from the Special Revenue Fund, the Capital Project Fund, Solid Waste, Francis Farm Landfill, in the amount of $6,495,582 to appropriate the amount for the Francis Farm Landfill Restrictive Cover Implementation from the amounts put aside in the Solid Waste Special Revenue Fund in order to cover this project, which includes items A through C and a potential stream crossing. And that's under attachment 14. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of that?
Just, I think a note on that, the discrepancy in the number is that stream crossing that we're going to hold off, that money's there, but we approved the money, but we're holding off on that and thinking we're getting a better bid, but.
We put it in the budget amendment.
You know, the numbers don't add up, you know, just, just wanted to clarify that. You mentioned it in your presentation, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I ask for first and second?
I think so.
I did? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's unanimous, right? Uh, okay. Sorry, I got lost in my track. Okay, thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Did we get all that right, Tracy? Just want to make sure before we move on. Okay, thank you. Okay, next is to request approval of the following conveyance of real property and distribution of funds to the Haywood County Consolidated School System Board of Education for relocation of the school administrative office. And we have our county manager, Bryant Morehead, here this morning. Go ahead, Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, that the county has a contract for what the school board has been using as their central office at the old hospital with Landmark. That will be closing in late summer. We've talked several times with the school board about a consolidated facility ranging in different sizes and plans. And we've, we've all worked together to, to see if we couldn't use ANX-2, as, as we call our facility, really directly across the street from where the hospital, or the, the school administration is. Dr. Nolte and his folks have been great to, to work with. They think it will work. It's, it's not perfect, but it's, it's a great use of our funds in the, in the facility. And to the taxpayer, it's, it's much cheaper than a $12.8 million facility at this time. This budget change will convey the property that we call ANX-2 to the school board. And we also are, are going to provide $750,000 to be taken from fund balance to help the school board renovate that facility. Dr. Nolte's here, I'll, I'll turn it over to him.
Commissioners, Dr. Putnam is here. We came to represent our board. We want to thank you for good faith work over the last couple of years to find a resolution to the 1980 lease of the current building. I'm sure that was a good faith lease and worked really well the first 20 or so years. And I think we should all be very, very proud, your board, our board, administrative staffs on both sides, for putting that lease behind us. If you vote accordingly in just a moment, we're excited about putting the lease behind us and we think the facility and the renovation funds will be appropriate to make that a building that can last for many decades and serve the central office needs really, really well. I just wanted to thank you for that. We have other needs that we'll work on at a later time when we come out of this crazy world that we're living in. But we appreciate your work and the collaborative work of your administration, our administration, your board, and all the work that our board has done. Just wanted to offer that public thanks. Dr. Putnam and I came, we didn't want to crowd the meeting anymore with other board members, but just know that we've talked to them about this and we've not had any objections on their part at all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Appreciate the good relationship we have with you guys. Okay, so I will entertain a motion that we approve to convey the real property located at 1233 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, parcel ID number 8615-89-0831, being known as ANX-2 Building to the Haywood County Consolidated School System Board of Education for the relocation of the school administrative office. And this is called ANX-2, which is straight across the street from the old hospital. So I'll, I'll entertain that motion and then we can discuss it if we get.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this?
I, I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, that I appreciate the collaboration that we did have. I spent a lot of time working back and forth trying to come to the resolution that we have. And I appreciate all the time. I know a lot of folks, Dr. Putnam and Dr. Nolte, put into getting us data, getting us information and putting a lot of work into it along with our staff. So thank you guys for working with us.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so we, all, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next is a motion to approve a budget amendment from the fund balance from the capital out Kettle A for $750,000 to appropriate some fund balance to cover the cost of the renovation of the ANX-2 building for the relocation of the school administration office. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Okay, here now I'll entertain a motion, I mean, I'll entertain a, let's see, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. And I do appreciate the school and, and I know, I know, I know y'all would like to do a consolidation of a lot of your services and I think we'll be looking at that in the future, too. I, I do believe that we need to, you know, be, be thinking about that when things kind of get straightened out. Okay, the next item on the regular agenda is to request approval to accept the proposal purchase of Grantus, Granicus, I guess, software and hardware for the administration and governing body departments in the amount of $25,386 for the first year to be paid from budgeted funds for this fiscal year and approval for the county manager to execute all documents for said proposal and purchase. And Grant, you want to describe that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Granicus is actually an agenda management software. The way we put the agenda together is, is labor intensive. You may remember when Ms. Wei was, was clerk, Tracy acted in support as, as deputy clerk. She also does work at, and for the tax office and administrative assistant work for the manager's office. So she's incredibly busy and this will give us some efficiencies as how we put the agenda together. It will also help with the broadcasting of the meetings. The software also includes an e-comment section to where people can comment electronically about agenda items. It's not meant to be a public forum where we respond back, but it does allow people to comment about specific items. And it also will be more transparent as far as being able to, to look at the agenda, click on an item and then bring that portion up in the meeting exactly. So it's going to help transparency, efficiency, and it's also going to give away for feedback from the public. That's one of the things that counties have struggled with, especially with social distancing. This would be a tool to where we could hear from the public if they're not able to attend in, in person. So we're using lapse salary funds. The first year's $25,000. It's got some setup and hardware costs. The cost drops down to about $20,000 the next few years after that. I think we'll have a good product. I sent you a link to, Guilford County uses it. They're very happy with it, so I think it'll be good for us.
Okay. Is anybody having any questions on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve. I've already read it. So I'll entertain the motion at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I think, I think they sent us a little link to that, which is really good, because you can actually click on the link and it goes to the video exactly where, I think the media will appreciate that, because it goes exactly to that discussion. So that's pretty good. And I know it'll save a lot of time. So I know Tracy would probably like to say a whole lot right now, but she won't. She don't ever want to talk. So can I, so can I have a, do I have a motion and a second? I did? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next order, the next item is to request approval of a resolution for the late list penalty waiver for business and personal property tax accounts. I had requested an extension to file by January 31st, but were not able to file business personal, personal property listing by April 15th, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And Frank, you want to tell us about that?
This is a little bit of, in terms of dollar amounts, very small potatoes, but it clears up a thing that was, our attention was drawn to by the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Every business has to list its personal property taxes, its property, its personal property for taxes, generally in the month of January. Lots of businesses get an extension by their accountants or by themselves to delay that until they've prepared their tax returns, because they, they use the same data for their tax returns. They use that for their personal property tax listing.
Exactly.
Well, the problem is that there's an absolute statutory deadline of April the 15th. That's to file those personal property listing forms, which are technically called, I think, I think they're technically called an abstract. Is that what they call them, David? Ah, forget it. He wasn't paying attention. The, anyway, this form, a lot of accountants, anyway, the Department, the North Carolina Department of Revenue sent a memo out and said, if you want to, because this has been so messed up with the COVID thing, that is the tax returns not prepared, the tax listing form is therefore not ready, can't be filed. This establishes a streamlined procedure of waiving the 10% late listing penalty. That normally, if you file your personal property tax listing form late, that is after April the 15th, there's a 10% penalty of the amount of the tax. This allows the taxpayer to make application, fill out a form, and then the tax assessor to make a recommendation. It still doesn't save you guys from having to approve every one of those waiver requests. But it establishes a process of doing it in an efficient way, which we've done. Me and Judy Hickman have got a form created to do this. And if you approve this, all you're doing is setting in place a procedure where, at a future meeting or meetings, you may be presented by the tax assessor with five, six, 10, I don't know how many will take advantage of this or need to take advantage of it. But you'll be able to waive those 10% late listing penalties because of the COVID-19 thing. Does that sufficiently complicated?
You made it sufficiently complicated, yes.
Thank you very much.
Basically, we're waiving the late listings for folks because of COVID.
Actually, technically, you can't waive them, but you can waive them if they make application for it. Yes, yes. After the fact, they can make application for the waiver, and then you can approve that waiver.
Okay.
You can't do it in a blanket way. But after application, the tax assessor can present you with a stack of them, da-da-da, you can approve them.
Okay.
In terms of dollar amounts, you're waiving this little penalty amount, it's probably going to turn out to be a very small potatoes, but.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is to request approval of a resolution to intent to close and abandon unnamed unopened street and call for public hearing to be held on June 1st, 2020, at 9:00 AM in a historic courtroom of the historic courthouse located at 215 North Main Street. Waynesboro, North Carolina is required by North Carolina General Statute 153A-241. Frank, you want to explain that one?
This is the second most trivial thing that you'll consider today. This street is a, this paper street doesn't exist at all. It's about 80 feet long and about 20 feet wide. And it's part of these good folks' backyard right now. If we close the paper street, then the adjoining owners.
Split it.
Split it, comes to the middle of the unopened street. And they'll have a bigger, each of them will have a slightly bigger backyard. But, so that's what it is. You have to have a public hearing on it. We have to notify the DOT. It's put up signs. We have to put up two signs on the property that they're going to close this unopened unnamed backyard area.
Okay, so can I have a motion for that?
I'm making motion to have a hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, the eighth item of new business is to request approval of termination of the revised joint proclamation and second revised joint proclamation for Haywood County and all municipalities. Hang on just a second. Well, I'm sorry. My computer isn't working. Will somebody read that, please?
I will. Whereas Governor Laura Cooper, by Executive Order Number 116, declared a state of emergency for the state of North Carolina on March 10, 2020, that addresses response and protective actions to prevent the spread of novel coronavirus and COVID-19, a potentially serious public health hazard. And whereas a proclamation of a state of emergency for Haywood County and all municipalities was declared on March 15, 2020, due to the potentially serious public health hazard in Haywood County. And whereas a revised joint proclamation for Haywood County and all municipalities was declared on March 26, 2020, at 5:00 PM. And whereas a second revised joint proclamation for Haywood County and all municipalities was issued on April 6, 2020, effective immediately upon execution, extending the expiration date of the original revised joint proclamation for Haywood County, all municipalities to May 4, 2020. And whereas it has been determined that a revised joint proclamation and a second revised joint proclamation for Haywood County and all municipalities are no longer needed in Haywood County. Now therefore, be it resolved, the revised joint proclamation and second revised joint proclamation for Haywood County and all municipalities, and all the restrictions and orders there in Haywood County therein are terminated effective May 4, 2020. The proclamation of a state of emergency effective 11:58 AM on March 15, 2020, still remains in effect until rescinded pursuant to Chapter 31 of the Haywood Code of Ordinances. And this proclamation is effective May 4, 2020.
Okay, so basically, what this resolution does is basically just put us under the governor's orders, and we won't have any, there will not be any county restrictions. So I'll open it up for discussion of that.
Pretty much in a nutshell, this solves the problem with short-term rentals, things like that. We actually closed those, so this takes all that away.
Yeah, we didn't start with, but the governor, since he's, since he's, since the governor, and Frank can help me with this, since the governor does not allow leisure travel, then basically, that's why the lodging industry can't operate except for essential business, right, Frank?
Yes, Executive Order 121, called the governor's stay-home order, by implication and by explicit statement prohibits travel for non-essential purposes. And that includes, by implication, leisure travel. So under the state's rules, leisure travel is prohibited in North Carolina. The only thing about this resolution, we need to make sure that we're not rescinding our original proclamation of emergency by implication. We need to make sure that in this, if you adopt this resolution, that you do not rescind the declaration of emergency. You could simply, this, as presently extended, the current rules of Haywood County expire by their terms at 5:00 today. Okay? One way, you could rescind it instantly, but you could also just simply let it expire at 5:00. I think we need to do it explicitly so that we make explicit that we're not rescinding our declaration of emergency. We need the declaration of emergency, the original one, in order to qualify for these reimbursement issues.
Right. Yeah, we want to be able to get reimbursed for.
Correct.
The emergency. We're not, we're not doing away with the state of emergency. We're just doing away with whatever restrictions that we did have, which was basically the 14-day quarantine and the three-day, I think.
Well, we have quite an extensive stay-home order. And if you rescind that stay-home order, you'll be taking out a variety of slightly conflicting messages that go up, that conflicting with the governor's order. Remember, ours came first. We adopted a stay-home order, then the governor adopted one the next day. He wasn't looking to ours to see whether it was right or not compared to ours. So there's always been a little bit of interplay between the two of them. If you allow this, if you explicitly rescind your March 26 order, then you will simply be back where you were with the governor's order. You'd be like all the rest of the counties in the state that have no local.
Right.
Stay-home order. No local stay-home order.
Well, that's our intent, to revert back to the governor, am I correct?
Well, if you, yes, if you authorize this.
Yes.
So for the folks that we're addressing about the short-term rentals, the governor addressed those? Do I understand that correctly?
The governor's proclamation is quite explicit that it prohibits leisure travel. We've always allowed travel for essential purposes. And the governor, the governor's proclamation makes it clear that hotels and similar are essential businesses. So under the governor's order, any motel can stay open, but leisure travelers can't travel to get there. But essential travelers, and travelers such as businesspeople or workers or all the people that have, meet the definition of essential travel, can occupy motels. They always have been able to, even under our ordinance. Our ordinance is quite clear about that.
You know, a little historical synopsis. We were all told that the governor was going to have the press conference on May, March 25th. And he put, he basically killed all the small businesses. And we were told that possibly there was going to be some travel restrictions embedded with that. That was rumor. And then, of course, as you know, we had the emergency meeting here at 10:00 AM on the next day to try to get a little more control. With the TDA's survey, we got the blessings of all our lodging owners, if you remember. And the survey came back, they were in favor of us trying to reel in some of this out-of-state travel, some of these hotspots like New York and other areas. And we responded to that. And we put that into effect. And then, I can't speak for the rest of these guys, but my phone didn't quit ringing for about 24, 36 hours. And the governor turned right around the next day and did basically what he should have done on Wednesday, and put all those travel things that you just mentioned in place. So we're basically just handing the ball back off to Raleigh. And, you know, I wish everybody that spoke was still here. I see Mr. Edwards there. I caught your comments. And when you spoke during the public comment session, where there's no fault for any elected leader or any health leader that took advice based on these dire predictions. And, you know, we did right at the time. But as we go further down the road, this thing's a little more predictable. Our health department's done a fabulous job. We've educated the public. We know that this COVID-19 is very discriminatory. It discriminates against old people, people with immunocompromised situations. And just going off Dr. Jabin's comments, you want to go back to your 45-year-old age group and older, there's 95% of the people that catch this 45 years old and older, .0419 and under. I just looked at the data. And there's even people walking back the decision to close the school systems, of course. That'll be somebody else's decision. But we're learning more and more every day about this invisible enemy. We're starting to paint a face on it. We're beginning to see its characteristics. We're beginning to see how it affects people and who it attacks, who it doesn't attack. And, you know, I think all our national leaders are starting to revise their game plan, and they should. You know, any good ball coach at halftime goes in and makes some adjustments to win the game. And we've done excellent. I think our health department should be patted on the back. I got a, I listen to a lot of people, and I've got a very good advisor who was a West Point graduate, 40-year military guy, worked with pandemics. And he was singing the county's praises. He sent an email to me the other day, a message, and said, you know, if you've done anything, you have given us time to get a huge lead over our opponent. You know, we're one, we're way ahead on our opponent because of the actions that you took. And you've notified the public. You've educated the public to the dangers of the enemy. And now we've got a little better game plan. And so I've heard everybody that spoke. I think everybody I've talked to said, hey, guys, you, everybody we know can't fault any government leader, any elected official, any health department leader, given the dire predictions, the 2.1 million people, bodies packed out in the street, having to decide who gets a ventilator and who doesn't get a ventilator, because we got a restricted number of ventilators. You know, we listened to all that, and we acted on the information that we had. I think we did a very good job. And I think our public has responded. So again, I said it before, I think our public health people have done an excellent job communicating to us the steps that we need to take to prevent it. This started back when we had this flu situation that struck our county in December. So I think we were practicing, we had some very good practices in place at that time. So I won't labor the point anymore, but.
I guess about the only way I can do it. If it comes down to it, Frank, if we do this, it removes Haywood County's responsibility as far as these people that are coming here, because we know they're coming. Are we still going to be charged with enforcing and running around and trying to make sure that these motels don't open and these other people don't rent their properties? Or does this take us completely out of it and allow people to manage that based off the governor's order? I guess is what I'm looking for.
The governor's proclamation has the effect of law. And every part of it is subject to enforcement by the same rules that apply to the enforcement of our local proclamation. That is a six months in jail, $2,000 fine, something like that. It's a criminal violation to violate the terms of an emergency proclamation, okay? And that doesn't change whether it's the state's emergency proclamation that's being enforced or a Haywood County one. The proclamation, the power of enforcement is exactly the same. Law enforcement has the duty to enforce all of the laws, and that includes the governor's proclamation.
On this termination, it says a revised joint proclamation for Haywood County and all municipalities was declared on March 26. So where do we reference the original joint proclamation? So, where do we reference the original joint proclamation?
It's only, the original proclamation was about two sentences long, and was, at the time regarded as just a technicality to start the process of a time within which you can get reimbursement for emergency actions, okay? And so, the original proclamation was also signed by all the municipalities. The revised one is the first time that we have any detailed stay-home rules, and of course, it's pages long. I don't know, it's like eight pages long or something, but.
So, the 15th was, included the state of emergency, and then the 26th talked about the rules?
Yes, yes, that is exactly correct. The 15th was the.
There was a 10:00 a.m. meeting, I think, or.
That was one sentence, declaration of emergency.
And then, when did Governor Cooper put his?
Next day.
On the 27th?
The 27th, yes.
It went into effect at 5:00 p.m. on the following Monday, if you remember.
So, the 14-day quarantine is gone, and the three days out of the county requiring you to quarantine, that is ours. All of that's gone with this.
Right.
Right.
You, they're, the, that's correct.
Is there anything else that it's going to affect the people? Kind of what I'm trying to do is get the people that are watching to be able to understand that now it falls to the state's mandate, because a lot of people are confused as to what we did and what the county, or what the state did. Ours are a little more restrictive because of the 14 days. Is there anything else that's going to directly affect them that you can think of?
Well, when we first, when the governor first passed his, we did an analysis and published it comparing in a form of a frequently asked questions paper that specified where there were differences between the local and the state rules, and that was actually amended later on. I think people have kind of forgotten about those because they were published so long ago, but they addressed each and every, well, they addressed the big differences between the two proclamations. Now, you can go to get an explanation of the statewide order, the state has published a frequently asked questions. They, I don't think, I've not really seen it amended much, but any business owner or any person now will have a single place to look to see about what the rules are, and it's in fact published on our website. It's called EC121, and then that's executive, no, EO, Executive Order 121. And then, there's a frequently asked questions that accompanies that. Those are both on our website, and then there's some, of course, if you go to the state, NC Health and Human Services COVID site also has all of the governor's executive orders, because there've been a variety of them since then, that closed the schools, that, you know, about every two or three days, they would be doing something that was addressing some concern and making that clear. So, all that, I don't think all of those state orders have been ported over to our website, but they're all right there in one place on the state's NC Health and Human Services website. So, you can look right there. Now, they'll be looking in one place, not two places, one. And if you adopt this, I'll strip off of the website all of those explanations that dealt with our rules.
Any other questions?
No question, just a few other comments.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. I agree with Commissioner Pliss. You know, in the beginning, I feel like we did the right thing. I mean, with the data we were provided and what we knew at that time, I feel like we'd done the right thing, no doubt. We can go back and change that. However, you know, well, let me say this also. My biggest concern, I guess, during that time was what we had been reported, that we only had 10 ICU rooms and only 20 ventilators. And my biggest concern then was, would we be choosing who gets a vent, who don't get a vent? And what I've learned since that time, that even areas around us, that we are different, as someone mentioned earlier, from the Mecklenburg, you know, the charlottes, the Rollies, mainly the eastern parts of North Carolina, our county is different, and the counties that surround us are different as well. I know we've seen a spike in our cases in the last five days, but we're still only at the 17 mark, and as far as I know, there's none that's had to be hospitalized, and fortunately, we've had no deaths as of yet. But you look at other counties around us as well, and they have a whole lot higher and larger numbers of positive cases than we do, and still, we're not seeing that. I know at Memorial Mission, I seen last week where they had prepared by putting tents up in the parking lot, and now they've taken those down. They're not having to use them. And I know that we had prepared here, I had a good friend of mine that had offered his building up as a place to store folks, you know, if we needed it, and fortunately, we hadn't needed that. So, I guess, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, and knowing what we know today, you know, I am comfortable in lifting our restrictions, and I'm also in support of sending a resolution to Governor Cooper to allow us as counties, because we are different than eastern counties past us, to allow us to make our own decisions, and I know we'll be doing that next. But, you know, we look at places like, what I've learned is, we look at places like Lowe's and Walmart and Engles, and we have allowed them to be open, and unfortunately, we've shut our smaller businesses down. And my feelings now are, if we can social distance, wear masks, wash our hands, sanitize in these big box stores, we can also do that in our small businesses as well. And I have had many, many phone calls of small business owners, and I am one myself, and I understand where they're coming from. You know, we've made the decisions and took the precautions that we've done to save lives, and I think we've done a good job of that and kept our cases down, but unfortunately, we're killing our small businesses, and I'm full support of getting these businesses back up and running again so we can get our economy rolling again. It's going to take some time to get it back to where it was, I know, but I am all in favor to allow this, because like I said, if we can allow it in our big box stores, why can't they do it in these smaller businesses as well? Because they can take the same safety precautions. I've seen a lot of very creative ideas. Seen a picture of a hair salon just last week, of where they put shower curtains up in between and wear masks and taking precautionary measures. So, there's a lot of things I know that businesses can do to continue to operate, and I would like to see us get back to that. So, that's just a few comments before we move on to the resolution, but I am in support of that. You know, it's easy, it's easy for those that still have jobs and still drawing an income to say, well, we need to keep everyone safe and not allow that to happen, but when you're on the other side of that, and you're trying to pay your light bill and trying to keep your business alive, that you've used your life savings to open up, you know, it makes it a little tougher. So, I would also like to say, I appreciate our policy group. I've been part, Commissioner Chairman Enzi invited me to be part of a policy group, which we have a weekly call, and a lot of our public health officials, our law enforcement, EMS, health department, all these folks have been on the calls and spent a lot of time analyzing data and talking about our whole COVID-19 issue, and I want to thank all of them for their time they've put into this, all their help, their research, the data that helps folks like us as elected officials make decisions that we have to make, and I know they spend a lot of time, and I want to thank them for that.
Okay, is there any other comments on this first one? Okay, so I'll recommend a motion to approve the proclamation, I guess this is a proclamation or the resolution.
I'm making a motion.
Any other discussion? Favor, indicate, or saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I make one comment? I don't think anybody here is advocating for our residents to throw caution to the wind. I support the health department's plan, wash your hands under hot water 20 seconds, frequently wear a mask if you're out in public, you know, exercise, social distancing, and I've expressed to Brian a couple times that we need to change our point of attack. You know, nationally, we've carpet bombed the whole country, and we've ruined a lot of people's lives that probably were not at risk for this. But again, hindsight's 20/20. There's lots of geniuses out there today that think, you know, they're going off hindsight. We had to work off predictions, and we are getting data that we can formulate now to help us make decisions. So, you know, we advocate, please, you know, there's going to be recommendations, the governor's order now is in effect, you know, everything lays at the steps of the governor's matching now, and all the guidelines from the state take effect. So, we've done our part. We did send a letter two weeks ago, Mr. Chairman, to the governor expressing that two weeks ago, that we wanted to do this, and we heard nothing back, as far as I know, did we? We never got any word back from the governor, but we've expressed our desire to allow counties flexibility in making their own decisions. This isn't a one-size-fits-all situation. My data a minute ago, I wanted to clarify that, that came from New York City's Health Department, and they're ground zero. Other studies show that if you live in a rural part of the country, which is considered rural, which most of Haywood County is, you only have about a .2% chance of dying from this. So, you know, I think New York City's been a model for the whole country, and I don't agree with that. I just have to say personally, I don't agree with that. We're not stacked on top of each other here. We don't have a subway system. We don't have close-quarter people like they do. And I expressed to Brian, you know, as a county, I think if we could focus our attack on protecting our precious elderly people, our rest homes, our adult daycare facilities, things of that nature, where we have close-quarter elderly people who are at high risk, you know, I think we would be better served, and we'd be better serving our public. And again, that's based on data, that's based on hindsight. We didn't know that going in, but, you know, we need to adapt and change as we learn more about this, so, again, I'm not.
Okay.
Just one other thing out of that, too, as you said, we're not saying throw caution to the wind.
Absolutely not.
And also, if you don't feel comfortable, you can still stay home.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not saying that everybody has to go out now. Of course, you can't because of the governor's proclamation, but if you do feel that you have a compromised immune system, or you don't feel comfortable going out, by all means, you don't have to, you can stay home.
You know, and again, I've shared to us other people, the Department of Transportation, they have excellent records in our state. You can go online to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, they keep meticulous records. In 2018, we lost 1,442 residents to motor vehicle accidents. That is a per capita death rate of 13.89 per 100,000 people. Well, go look at it. 13.89 per 100,000 people due to motor vehicle accidents in the state of North Carolina last year. As of Wednesday night, I'm sure the numbers have changed, we had a per capita death rate of 3 in 100,000 to COVID-19. Now, if that stays flat basically for a year, you're looking at 12. But we're hoping our healthcare professionals have educated the public, and we're doing, we may see a spike, we don't know, but everybody suggests that this thing's going to trend downward. So, even if it stayed where it's at, you know, we're looking at 12 per 100,000 over a year's time, basically, roughly at or about less than what the risk is to driving your vehicle down the road. So, we're not taking up people's keys in the name of public health, you know, telling people not to drive. And, you know, it's for the same reasons, the socioeconomic impact of this that we heard today may far outweigh what this disease takes itself, and those factors will be months, be months down the road in deciding that, and there'll be people studying this for years, I'm sure.
You're not saying don't wear your seatbelt, or drive slow, or take precautions.
I'm not saying don't wear your seatbelt, or exceed the speed limit either.
Got to take precautions.
Take precautions. There's a risk at everything we do. I think, I was talking to some doctor over the weekend, and I think he and I both agree, we have to learn to live with this. We need to coexist, and we're going, you can die of economic failure and all the effects of that, or you can die of this virus. So, we're going to have to learn to live with it until the vaccine's developed, coexist with it, add it to the other list of all the viruses and pathogens that we experience and come in contact with every day. Just add this one to the list and take precautions that we've been educated on, and it's time to move on.
Okay, and I'll just say, you know, during our public comment, there was a comment made by somebody that said they were in a grocery store, and they weren't. Somebody, I guess people were getting on to them because they didn't wear a mask, and I would recommend if you're out in public to please wear a mask. I know I'm not wearing one right now because I'm so far away from everybody, but when I go to the grocery store or to other businesses, I'll just wear a mask, and I think we all need to be wearing a mask when we're out in public as much as we can, if, you know, if you've got one available. Because like she was saying, that, you know, we're getting on to her because she didn't have a mask, and she wasn't going down the right aisles, I guess. You know, in the stores, they have aisles, and they have direction arrows and stuff, and I would ask that everybody please follow that. You know, we have protocols in place to keep people safe, but if you're going to go willy-nilly and just because you can, you think you can, that's not helping anybody, and it's not helping your cause either. So, I think we all need to be making sure, I would highly recommend you wear a mask when you go out into the store. I would recommend that, and I think that's what our health director and our health, medical health director have said also, so I think, you know, we need to continue doing the social distancing, wash your hands. And I know at first they were saying not to wear a mask, but I would recommend that you wear a mask. So, and one, two numbers you need to be aware of, too, is we have 10 ICU beds in our hospital, and we have 20 ventilators in the county. So, when I hear people putting these numbers, it's like .00%, put that, factor that in, too. That's how many percent we've got of the healthcare facilities that we need, so. And we can handle a lot of cases, I do believe, before we overload that, but let's keep doing the social distancing, wear a mask if you can, wash your hands. We need to keep doing this, and as businesses do reopen in the future, they're going to have protocols, and whatever those protocols are, we go into those businesses, please follow them, because I think it's important to keep everybody safe, because a lot of us only go out because we have to, not because we want to, and a lot of people are, have underlying health conditions, so I just want to put that out as a, you know, as a word. But I am in favor of doing as much as we can to get businesses back in opening, because we do live in a new day, because three months ago, I mean, I'm sorry, three weeks ago, when you went into a store, things are a lot different. I know that big box stores now, like Walmart and Lowe's, have got protocols in place now that they're using, so, and that's very good, and please follow those, because that's to keep the employees safe and everyone safe. Okay, our next resolution is to ask for flexibility mainly, and I just want to read the last two paragraphs.
I don't think we voted on that.
Yeah, we did.
Did we?
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, okay. Our next resolution, I just would direct you to the last two paragraphs. I think that's what, it's probably the most important. It says, "Whereas just as North Carolina is not identified, identical to other states, individual counties in North Carolina also have differing circumstances. Risk, population dynamics, Haywood County Board of Commissioners know the circumstances and risk of the local politician, and can work with public officials to determine systematic reasonable measures in a three-phase plan to reopen. We will take measures to protect the health of its citizens and safety of its citizens in line with the current recommendations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners urges the state to allow all current North Carolina executive orders restricting the operation of business to expire and to permit Haywood County government to begin a cautious plan to reopen business in three measured phases beginning on May 8, 2020, in compliance with federal recommendations and in close consultation with the public health recommendations." I wanted to put this resolution in, and we can change, we can change it if y'all would like, some of the wording in that, but I wanted to have that in at this time. like, some of the wording in that, but I wanted to have that in at this time also. Ask the governor for flexibility, and the reason is because I kind of feel like he's treating us like Micklenburg County and Wake County, which are where the two population centers are, and I'd like for the counties to have flexibility in what to do, because we in the mountains, or we on the coast, if you will, like Dare County, Hyde County, Carteret County on the coast, have different economies and have different businesses than they do in Charlotte and Raleigh, where, like Tommy said, in New York, they're on top of each other. So I was wanting to ask the governor for, to let the local counties do the, make those decisions, so that's what this resolution's about. So I'll open it up to y'all's comments at this time.
Well, I'd like a little clarification on the second part of the now there fore clause, which says, and to permit Haywood County government to begin a cautious plan to reopen for business in three measured phases beginning May 8th, 2020. And it says, in compliance with federal recommendations and in close consultation with public health recommendations. So my first question is, is Haywood County government us, the commissioners that begin this cautious plan, and are the three measured phases the exact phases that the federal government has recommended? And do we, as the five commissioners, determine what phase we're in? So I just have a lot of questions about what, who determines what when it gets to the now there fore clause. I mean, it just leaves, it leaves a lot open, and I don't know if I want that much left open, because I'm ready to open.
I agree 100%. I'm not so sure, I mean, that I understand the three phase. Like you said, I'm ready to open, so.
Yeah, so if the governor allows, because when, today, I guess we've terminated our proclamation, so if the governor allows for looser restrictions to individual counties, then it's up to those individual counties, and I assume the board of commissioners of those counties, to enact phases of which to follow that are similar than to the phases that the federal government has produced. So we have a meeting today that the governor says, okay, counties, you can begin, these particular counties, because they're rural counties, can begin reopening under a certain, under a certain phased-in plan. Is he going to determine that plan, or do we get to determine that plan? I think that's, you know, that's the big issue, or at least...
Well, now, we're under the federal government, though, right? Is that what you're...
Well, I mean, that's, is that the phase? But the thing is, those, all those plans, all those phased-in plans have criteria you look at to determine what phase you're in, and if you go to phase one to phase two, then, and you have a certain number of cases or a certain, you know, certain number of deaths, then you move back to phase one. So, you know, who's make, who's going to make those determinations? Is my question.
Well, the last sentence says, in compliance with federal recommendations, so I guess we'd make those decisions based on federal recommendations, the way it reads, the way it currently reads.
Well, I think if I understand correctly, you're asking who's going to make that? Do we need to spell out in there that the commissioners will make that decision, or the Health Department will make that decision? Is that kind of what I'm understanding?
Well, I don't know that we need to spell it out, and we can, you can send this, but I think something needs to be stated, or we need to presume as a board that as soon as the governor drops his order or changes his order, that, or allows certain counties to change their orders, then we need to take a look at how we're going to phase that in, because that's what we're asking here. We're asking for our county government to be allowed for itself to phase in protocols to allow our county to open back up based on what we think. And so if he does that, do we have a meeting right away to say, okay, this is the way we're going to do it?
Yeah. I see what you're saying, playing off that last where as.
That's what, that's what I think it would be, Kurt. Because like I've said, I'm not going to do anything that I don't have y'all's approval on.
So do we need to change that last paragraph?
You want it to be worded a different way, Kurt?
You want to explicitly state that we'll have a special meeting to set the boundaries? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I just want to know, because I don't know, when the government lifts, I mean, when the state lifts his order, when the governor lifts the order, if he lifts, if he lifts it all together, then it doesn't matter. I don't think that that's going to happen. I think he's going to lift it in phases. I don't know what those phases are going to be and what counties they're going to affect.
What I think, I think what we want to do, or what we're trying to do at the resolution is ask the governor if he'll give us the permission to do what we want to do.
Okay, and so if he does, then we meet again to determine what those phases are.
What if, if on the second part where it says allowing it to expire and to permit Haywood County government, change that to Haywood County Commissioners to begin a cautious plan? And then that would open it to where it would come directly back to us to sit down and have those meetings that you're wanting to have just by changing that word?
Well, I'm on the Smoky Mountain Event Center board, and we canceled our meeting today. You know, I did, I told them let's have one next Monday after the governor does his thing on Friday, and maybe we'll have a little clearer understanding of what's going to take place. You know, it's, it's going to come out of Raleigh, that's...
Yeah, I think it's just a moot point, but I think what I'm wanting, I mean, I think our resolution is probably going to be a moot point, but I just want to let the governor know that there are counties that want, that have flexibility to be able to open up, because we're different. We're different than Raleigh and Charlotte. That's my, that's my idea behind this.
Well, I'd just like to have a meeting as soon after the governor makes the determination, and so we'll know how to act as soon as possible, and that's all I'm asking.
I would, I would suggest that we have a plan in place. I mean, we need to be working on that now. I mean, it needs to be able to be accessed electronically, reach the file cabinet, go in there, some guidelines that we see necessary to have. I would like to be proactive on this, because we're, it's going to lift one day, and sooner the better, and we need to be able to hit the ground running. So I, you know, I'm, I think we need to go ahead and have that in place through the Health Department, you know, county manager, feedback from all players, you know, in the decision-making process on how to do this the best way, you know. That's my thinking.
Okay, so maybe say, hey, Health Department, we understand your concerns, we understand your concerns, Dr. Jaben, however, as the government, or as the five county commissioners, we want to open this place back up. So you begin to make recommendations in accordance with what our wishes will be, and that is to open it back up.
We're a team effort.
And then if that's for social distancing, if that's for restaurant workers to wear masks, if that's for, you know, people to be seated in tables, you know, two tables apart for restaurants to open.
Right.
And for other stores to comply with the same things that Lowe's and Ingalls and those stores are complying with. And then, of course, I mean, obviously, since this has started, and we've been, we've certainly been made aware that the population of 65 and older is more at risk, that the elderly are more at risk, that the people with respiratory conditions are more at risk, diabetes, obesity, and at some point in time, I mean, there's a few people that said it out here, but we have to take care of our own health. And now after we've been able to collect data about this, this disease, which I think is a serious, I mean, it's a bad bug, but we also know how to handle it and protect ourselves, and then we have the choice to do that, and think about those people that we should be protecting. But to me, it can't continue to stop the economy.
No, the, you know, the hair salons, the barber shops, those people statewide, you're looking at 100 counties, the first 30 or 40 of those in each county, you're looking at four or 5,000 people, that my understanding is some of them can't draw unemployment, because they're, they're considered self-employed. I mean, I've had more calls from that, that demographic, you know, and I guess people want to get a haircut, but, but anyway, that's serious, you know. You have affected that many people's lives statewide, that they could have probably put some focused safety things in order, like Commissioner Rogers mentioned, that could have kept those people's livelihood intact and others. But yeah, you know, if we have to come up with plans where, like you suggested, a shower curtain in between chairs and wear all the proper PPE equipment, the person getting their hair cut, and the person doing the hair cutting, or whatever the ladies get done, I think, I think it's doable in conjunction with our, our health folks' recommendation. But that's going to come from the governor. You know, that's, you know, we're talking about things that really need to be handled in Raleigh, for the most part, and, you know.
You think we need to change the wording, anybody?
No, I don't know that we necessarily need to change it, we just need to make sure to, to, when the governor decides what he's going to do, then we need to have a response ready for that, as to what we're going to do as a county. And then, Brian, I think what we would need to do is start working on those measures. I think you understand the wishes of the board, that you can work with the health director and...
Okay, we were, we returned our meeting, our tape, we had to replace our tape, and so Brian was making a comment, go ahead, Brian.
Talking about a plan that if the governor does, okay, counties, you can decide for yourselves how we would implement that. We'd get our policy group back that we refer to, to talk about that, but we would probably start with the guidelines from the White House as well as the governor's office, because they have a lot of the same measures in place. We'd decide what would work here. We'd also need to bring in people from our Economic Development Chamber of Commerce, folks, travel and tourism, all of those things, to sit down and come up with a plan. If that's something that, we've started talking about it, but quite honestly, there's so many other fires to put out, we haven't formalized a plan, but I can certainly get our IMT group together and start that plan this week, if the governor does lift that. I think, I think he's going to handle the state as a whole, but we, you're right, we do need to have a plan in case we, we are allowed to open it up ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't really have a problem with this resolution right now as long as, as once the governor makes a decision that we know is board, we need to meet as soon as possible to, to react to that, whatever it is, or it may, if he extends it, there's nothing we can do about that. Just sit back and wait.
Yeah, I guess the only question I do still have, though, is, is if we're saying a three phase, does that mean we have to do, if he, if he okays it, does that mean we have to have a three-phase...
That's just what the federal government and the state has, has...
Recommended.
Produced or recommended to open up, but you can actually, depending on the status of your community, it says, well, you can move to phase two, or you can move to phase three if you're at this point.
I think the timeline is probably what would be movable, on how far in between those phases, a week, two weeks, you know, whatever is deemed...
A day.
A day. Who knows?
I mean, the fact of the matter is, we're going to be living, we're going to be living with this virus for a while, and it's going to, it's going to ebb and flow.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to, it's going to come back, and people are going to get sick, and but, you know, social distancing and taking precautions is something, it's a new way of life for a while.
Yeah, it's not going away.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if you said go today, that's still not going to change. People's going to stay home, they're going to sanitize.
People will do what's best for their individual health.
I think that's what we're saying.
Yes, right.
We want to allow them to self-manage.
That's right. Give the people, you know, the power to make the decision for their health in a responsible way, you know, for others.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Karen, next. Our next order of business is appointments. We have our county manager, Brian Moorhead, to request approval and appointment of Jean K. Dilly to the library board of trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Dilly has requested to be put on the library board. She's lived in Haywood County for six years, currently works for the Haywood Chamber of Commerce. She has been a lifelong active user of the library. She loves the purpose of the library and wants to be part of it going forward.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we appoint Jean K. Dilly to the library board of trustees.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, our next order of business is closed session, Economic Development, 143-318-11A4, and I'll entertain a motion we go into closed session.
So moved?
Is there a second? Tommy seconds.
Brandon did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brandon. Okay, Tommy second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back.
Okay, we're back from closed session. Does anyone have any other business before the board?
Okay, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
So moved?
Second. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all, and stay safe.